Start our city council meeting. This is November the 21st, our monthly city council meeting. So with that, Renee, if you do a call of your order, please.
Mayor Ankorz.
Here.
Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Richards.
Here.
Council Gross.
We have a quorum, so we'll continue. We have an agenda and I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to add two amendments to the agenda.
A second?
Second.
The point of order, you don't need to, you do motions for the, for those amendments. For each amendment, you wouldn't need to. I just know that that was something that was brought up prior to the meeting.
So we can make changes before you vote.
Yep, but it doesn't have to be a formal motion for each one. You could do it all as one big, one motion altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to add two items under Personnel Committee. Item number two would be interim city administrator replacement.
Number three.
That's me number three, because that's part of two. Two has admin staff hiring already.
Oh, you did.
Under Personnel.
Oh, it's on the back page.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So number three would be the interim city administrator replacement. And four would be PTO payout employees.
Any other changes?
Yeah, we're gonna add the item about the closed session.
Closed session, yes. That was, I have an item for a closed session. And that would be in our, I thought I had it written down here. That'd be under Personnel, too, the, the number five for closed session.
So then you should list the agenda item, closed session for?
Closed session for employee unemployment.
Well, hold on.
Previous employer.
So it'd be closed session for pending litigation. Corey Matsky versus the City of Orinoco at the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development.
Three changes to personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. All right. Public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider interim moratorium through January 1, 2025 prohibiting the sale, manufacture, and/or distribution of cannabis within the city to allow for a period of study as allowed by state statute. Those that like to speak to that, please step to the podium and you have your slip to give it to me or to Renee. Make sure you get the correct name. A second call for public hearing for the cannabis interim moratorium.
It will go to your heart, says memorandum on the, on the cannabis memorandum. I think it's supposed to say cannabis moratorium, but they, the agenda says memorandum. I think it's just a table.
Oh, I'm just reading from the public hearing, so it's an oversight on the agenda. The third and final call for the cannabis moratorium. See none? Well, this is the public hearing at 6:35. Okay, next item is a new council member. Approval swearing in, and we did an interview of a candidate yesterday, or last night. And with that, I would, we had one candidate. So I'll make a motion to approve Paul Pendegrass as to fill the vacancy until December 31st of 2024.
May I second then?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Paul, you come forward. We have a quick certification and swearing in.
I, Paul Pendegrass, New Southam, I swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Minnesota, then will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of city council and the City of Orinoco and the Council of, the County of Olmstead, State of Minnesota, and necessary judgment and abilities to help me.
It's blue or black?
It doesn't matter. It may be black.
It's blue.
It's blue, yeah.
Congratulations, Paul.
Yep, thank you.
And if you'd like, it'd be great. All right. Our next item is our public forum. This is a three-minute time limit per person. City council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employee's names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council meeting this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step forth to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. You'll be timed beginning, begin speaking when the green card is raised, and Renee will do that. Yellow card in case you have 30 seconds left, and the red card in case you have reached your three-minute time limit, and stop. So with that, whoever would like to speak, please come forward. Go ahead.
Jackie Mills, 425 Eagle's Lane, South East Orinoco. I am just coming because I was in a state of shock and disbelief when I heard of the termination of our city administrator, and I worked on her, with her on a couple of occasions when finishing our basement and filling in some forms. So I just wanted to go on record saying that she was always very pleasant, and I had a really good experience.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Please come forward.
Okay.
Dana Bergner, 760 River Park Road, Southeast Orinoco. I had intended to come to this meeting to say about the abrupt firing of our city administrator at last meeting. But then I watched the most recent planning and zoning meeting, and I am here tonight to call attention to some very concerning comments made during that meeting on November, on November 15th. Before I start, I want to remind the public that meetings can be found on the City of Orinoco's YouTube channel. On November 15th, the Hamilton Group was in front of Planning and Zoning to propose a plan for a development that would include single-family, twin homes, townhomes, and possibly an apartment complex. At the timestamp of 32 minutes and 15 seconds, a council member and planning and zoning commissioner made the following comment regarding proposed apartment complex. Begin quote, "My concern, and I come from Southern California for 45 years, is just that I want to maintain that we get the right type of families that there are that are associated with that, if I can say that politely, you know? And that's where an association would make a difference," end quote. This comment made me wonder what makes up the right type of family? Is this something you can see by looking at a person, like maybe their gender or their race? Or maybe it's something a little deeper, like their sexual orientation or their religion? In any case, I am thankful that in the United States, we have federal and state laws to protect people from against discrimination. Property owners cannot discriminate against you because of your race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, marital status, disability, public assistance, sexual orientation, gender identity, or familial status. In addition to that, property owners, managing agents, financial institutions with, with real property trust, interest, and real estate brokers cannot deny loans or offer less favorable terms and conditions to applicants. Refuse to rent an apartment, refuse to make necessary repairs to a rental unit, refuse to reasonably accommodate an individual with a disability, or evict a tenant because of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, marital status, disability, receipt of public assistance, sexual orientation, gender identity, or familial status. So going forward, I hope councils will better educate yourselves on the civil rights of the citizens in this community. I will leave you with this handout explaining how the Human Rights Act protects everyone in Minnesota, not just the right type of families. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Dana. Anybody else would like to speak?
Matt Harder with Harder's Disposal Service. So we submitted a proposal for a refuse recycling contract. Head up your new council member. So one of the handouts is a bill from a current resident, so he had bins delivered to this resident. We weren't aware that Orinoco had a contract, and we have to pick them up because I don't know if there has a contract, so it's not a big deal about that. So it shows what the current cost is. There's a snippet of your current contract, a full copy of that, but it shows the start price. Says right in there, 4% each year. Chatting with the rep, and the rep says that they weren't increased 4% per year, but they're actually increased 30% per year. He said that it's not part of the contract, this resident, but they're right in the city, so I'm not sure. As a matter of fact, is this resident and I presume other residents are being charged more than what the current contract allows. So I just, I just want to make that clear because so everyone's on a level playing field, it's fair to compete. It's hard for us to compete if we put in the hottest price that we're gonna stick with, and then another hauler puts in a price and doesn't stick to it. Just, we can't compete with that. When we give you a price, we're gonna stick to it. Our bid is an upgrade from your current service, provides for weekly recycling collection, currently at every other week recycling collection. Use split body trucks, so these are lightweight, all 154,000 GBW. So we're able to collect the trash and the recycling with the same truck, so less, less wear, less impact on your streets, less trucks going through the neighborhood, safer. Again, just less rounds being made and easier around the street, so. In 95-gallon bins, you know, we got a price in there, so plenty of capacity. Your trash, we're, we're a family-owned company. We provide service to hundreds of thousands of residents in Wisconsin, Minnesota. We have a contract with Winona County to do all the recycling collection. We have a material recovery facility where we take the material and sort it and cross. We've been in the business since the 50s. We've had five generations, fourth generation. So been in the business for a very long time. We're certainly appreciative for the opportunity to provide the price. Love the opportunity to serve the residents of Orinoco. Certainly available for any questions. We, again, when we do business with customers, generally when we, when we, when we get new customers, we, we always tend to keep them. We provide good service. We like to check in with our municipalities, see if there's any issues, anything we should be addressing. So we're highly communicative and love to be your garbage hauler. And we'll look for any questions if anyone has any when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Second call for public forums.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Gable. I am new to Orinoco for a year and a half, and so I, and I'm very new to this city council meeting, so bear with me. First of all, I've got to
Your address, I'm sorry. Your address?
115 Second Avenue Northwest.
Thank you.
Uh, which is just Kenny Corner over here. Anyway, I wanted to come in and commend you folks for the city employees. Each and every one of them, I am so impressed, Parks Department with the city engineer. Well, you're the city engineer, who's the kid that came today, King? He's one, been wonderful to work with. It's just very, very, and Renee, no exception there. I was disappointed. I found out that Sunny had been let go, and that disappoints me because we have taken on several projects when we moved to Orinoco, and she has been instrumental in helping us. And the latest project we took on is attempting to build a garage. Now, we live on property that was, is way bigger than what we thought when we bought it, because it was the middle of winter when we looked at it. But as it turns out, we need a lot of storage for tractors, mowers, and things just to maintain our property. Unfortunately, that's taking up space in my garage where I would otherwise park my car. Last winter, I parked outside. This winter, Sunny had been helping us. We were looking over the abstract to see what could be done to get a garage for the equipment so I can park my car inside of a enclosed garage. In Minnesota, that's, that was one of my reasons for coming, so, or one of my stipulations incoming is that I had a garage. So please direct me where I can go now that I, we no longer have a city manager, that she knew all of the background of what we were doing. And as I said, very well-versed in helping us along, but now it's at a standstill, and it's cold outside. And I've been hoping for the garage before the snow flies, but as it turns out, that may not be the case. But if you folks couldn't give me a direction on where to go and from here on, I would, would be happy to do that.
Sure, okay. Contact City Hall and work with Renee.
Well, I have, she's well aware, but
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Erica Johnson, 475 River Park Road. The comment recorded on November 15th, starting at the 32-minute mark by a council member, was quoted, "My concern, and I come from, I lived out in Southern California for 45 years, is I just want to maintain that we get the right type of families that there are and that association, if I can say that politely." So here's the deal, you can't say that politely. Contrary to what many people hope for and bet on, is the simple fact that racism and bigotry is never polite. Over the past several months, I've watched as this council body has made increasingly suspect moves, both to silence any dissent, sometimes by going to the extremes of violating the constitutional rights of community members, as well as to install a slate of members to vote on as a block to push specific agendas. These decisions that greatly impact personal lives and the well-being of our community are being made by councilmen that are entirely out of their league. And now this, a clear directive by a council member that we need to make sure that the right families live in Orinoco. That was, there was a very distinct point made about living in Southern California. So I'd really love, if you could please explain how that helps you define who the right families are. Could you tell me, if you will, what defines the right family? Is it like mine, with brown skin? Is it like our other community members from the LGBTQ community? Or is it the family that flies the F your feelings flag? I'm really curious to know what your exact definition of the right family is. It seems too convenient not to be planned, that the council would work to remove dissenting voices, chill public pushback, and then boldly made proclamations like this, knowing the chance of being called out may be slim to none. That's where you're wrong. Racism and bigotry, no matter how polite, has no place on our city council. We're here and paying attention, and we want you to know hate has no place here.
Anybody else would like to speak, public forum?
Good evening. David Meyer with LRS. My address is 2530 12th Avenue Northwest Rochester. We also submitted a bid to you guys for the trash. I'm not sure if there was gonna be opportunity to talk later, so I'll go now, but we have quite a bit of experience with Orinoco. The contract came to you guys through kind of a buyout with place management, so they've had it, you guys renewed it with them, but I had managed a contract, I think, for eight years before, so again, just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to bid on it. We do service Umbroda, Ostrander, Lanesboro, and Spring Valley, and we've been very successful in renewing them. So like I said, I had renewed with you guys multiple times without, without going out for bid in the past, so like I said, just take, please take a look at ours. Like I said, we actually offer the light trucks, too. We would do every other week recycling just to minimize traffic, and like I said, our trucks are probably even lighter. We have some that are just over the 26,000 pounds, so we would have these in towns who would be less wear and tear on your roads also. So like I said, we wanted to say thank you for letting us have the opportunity to bid on it. If you have any questions, when you guys go through it, please, please reach out, so, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak, public forum? Last call for public forum. Okay, we'll close public forum at 7:52. Next item is our department's committee reports. And Sergeant Rin, this, I don't believe is here, so these are contacted the Olmsted County Department, and he usually is here if he's working nights. So with that, we have Water and Sewers, our next item. Does anybody have any questions for Joe regarding the two updates that are in your package? Okay. We'll continue on. We have a memo from Deputy Clerk Renee regarding a request from a resident to approve or deny a request to remove fees in the total of $18.09. See the paragraph there that she, this lady has been late five times this month, and this one is another request to have council look at her fee for removing, approve or deny a request to remove the fees for $18.09.
Did she ask the fee, asked for the fees to be removed before?
No.
No, no?
No. But she's But she's been late five times this year.
She's been late five times before, so
Time to hold her accountable, I would think.
I think it's a a repeat case for whatever reasons and, or excuses, so whatever, but I would, I would make a motion to deny the request to remove the fees. May I second one? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Next item is a, something we do every December. It's approval to set a public hearing for delinquent water bills for December the 19th. A memo is in our package from Renee regarding, uh, currently we have four accounts that could still be due or still paid for, but right now it's a matter of just setting the date, so. Let me, we'll make a motion to set that public hearing date. I make a motion to set the public hearing date for December the 19th at 6:35. A second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's approved. We have another item on our top of the next page, it's Orinoco Auto Salvage. It's in the same memo that had the comment about setting a public hearing. So you can see that Orinoco Auto Salvage itself is in the township. And that they have been, they did have a water curbs stop. Parch was sold in 2021, but that water bill is being paid off. And there's still late fees going towards that address, but nobody's paid. We cannot assess properties on the township. So we decided if we're going to look into different options, if that's working with the township, or we would assess. I would probably even do that with a township, but that might be something that
So we, we have an agreement for the new wastewater treatment system to provide to the mobile home Orinoco Estates. So you could do the same process. That was what I suggested. Just call them, call their clerk, and see if we could, and that's in the agreement that we have with them. So we're gonna do all the assessment, like the notices, setting the public hearing, holding the public hearing, conducting the assessment, passing the resolution, and then we would send that to them so that they could certify it to the auditors. They would just do that last step. And, and that's the only way you can really assess, like you can't assess it personally. This is why you're not supposed to extend water services to people outside the city limits, one of the reasons, so, but I think that would be the way to do it. And I think they were extended a long time ago, you know, decades ago, probably.
So just to be clear, this, we did that with Orinoco Estates for the sewer, but this is Orinoco Auto Salvage.
Well, right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be under that agreement. All I'm telling you is use the same structure for that agreement. We don't have to have a contract with them. We could just call their clerk and ask, will you do this for us? We give these people water they didn't pay, or they, whatever, will you please help us out and do that?
This is actually a property that's still within, inside the city limits, it's a shed across the street from them, isn't it?
The shed is, and they're okay. That's one of the different people now, and it's okay.
So what property are we?
Like a water, the junkyard across the street.
Junkyard itself.
They had water service, the curb stop.
They had separate connections. They talked to me about this. They had a separate connection for each one. They're delinquent on the one of the township. Or they're delinquent on both, but we can assess, or it changed ownership.
One in the township, yeah.
No, it's both.
Oh, it is both, even those two different owners?
Well, the one in the town had a little bit left over that never got paid when they sold it. And then the other one continues to rack up fees because it never gets paid.
So you couldn't assess the one in the town, the one in the township, you're gonna have to ask for
Well, the town has changed owners. The new owner has caught up on his bill.
Okay.
That's where the problem is.
Because how can, how can we shut off what's going over there?
I mean, that's why you never, you can never, it's an essential service. That's why, once you extend it, you know, you're gonna have to find a way.
Basically, it's an essential service to nothing, because there's nobody there. There's no business actually there.
Yeah, how, how long ago were these bills from, dude? Like many years ago?
I think it was in 2019 they stopped paying it, but I don't remember. I'd have to look back at it.
And so are they, is this for actual water used, or is this just their fee?
Their monthly fee and late fees that they haven't been paying. The monthly flat fee.
Right, so we're charging them under the ordinance for a flat fee, just like we charge everybody else, right?
It's the minimum fees, yeah, and then the late fees on top of it.
But they're not using any water.
No.
So you could make the argument, just let it go, because they're not using any water, or you could
We really can't go on the property to, we can turn the curbs stop up, because it's in the right of way.
Right.
Sitting in the right of way, yeah.
We usually are.
You could look into that, maybe turning it off and giving them a notice that if they wanna reactivate it to just
Option here, working with township, so take that into consideration, yeah.
I would think the biggest thing would be to shut it off and make sure that the, you're not gonna turn it back. It'll never get turned back on without being that fee.
Well, that's, that's a possibility, too.
It's something to lock it down and It's something to lock it down and.
Okay, we'll take your advice. All right. Streets and roads. You have Kane here? Oh, there is. Okay, thank you. So. In your memo, in your packet, there's a memo from. Lake Shady from Tilly's asking about, inquiring about additional streetlights. In front of their facility and also to the north. There's a diagram showing where those proposed lights are going on telephone poles, current telephone poles. Current power pole. So there's a.
We didn't get a diagram either. We didn't get a diagram.
I thought the diagram is in the packet.
No, it's not in the packet.
Uh, okay.
Oh, it might be somewhere else.
We don't want to get you sick.
You take a quick look at it. I'll share with you guys in a second. There's telephone poles across. And so what's happened is it's a safety issue as well. I've experienced this too. Running out of Tilly's at night, looking to the left, I see two headlights coming, thinking it's on highway fifty. And I pull out and it's going up in front of the car coming around the curve, a slight curve there. And I've heard that kind of other residents too, the. Done the same thing, think it's on highway fifty two. So it's a, Kane and I talked to our company, and it's a small investment of. Hanging some wires from a transformer to a post and adding arms on for arms and lights, so.
Those LED lights, is that what they put up there for that? LED lights on that?
Yeah, LED lights. There's a couple of posts have six foot arms, and the ones further back has a twelve foot arm sticking a little bit closer toward the road. So that would just kind of help visibility of somebody coming around the corner, so.
So those, those dots on there, Ryland, are proposed new lights?
Mm-hmm.
Additional light?
No, those poles, little dots are the poles.
The poles are there, but there's no lights on any of them, right?
Right. So we're just going to add the lights to them. That's the six hundred and ten dollars for, the transformers are there. It's just having our wires and arms and the lights, which is. And then those four lights would go on our electric, city electric.
I think that's a good taking point to have for the city, and I make a motion to approve putting the four lights.
Second?
Okay.
I have a second. All, there. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, that's approved. Next item is West Center Street stop signs at Ninth Avenue Northwest. And there's a couple. Our number is called Ward Acre in there. Very well done. Lot of research. We also collected. Three to four. Pages of. Positions named addresses. On West Center Street and also the neighboring. Shady Oak Lane and a couple of the streets are off to the side of West Center Street, so.
On that one. I, I would make the motion to. Well, discuss first. I think it would make sense either remove the eastbound one. Altogether or remove, or not the eastbound, I'm sorry, the westbound one coming up the hill because that's the issue. From because of winter. Yeah, and I know I lived up there, and that does get very slippery. It's kind of just right there as the hills start to press. I, I would suggest maybe we remove it for the winter. And maybe put it back for the summer or otherwise remove it altogether. I do think it will be an issue for the winter. If, if they have to stop coming up that hill and getting going again. Because I, I know we, we have streets that get plowed, but there's lots of times, you know, that, that is. Just either hard pack snow, that's ice, or, you know, if we get any type of rain, it's definitely ice if it freezes.
Look at that. It gets no shade, it gets no sun along there.
Right, yeah.
The only thing I would be concerned with, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying, is to make note go on the. Uh, other people coming up to the stop sign that there is, and what's that cross street that's there?
Ninth.
Ninth Street Avenue, to be able to turn around and make sure that they know that the person that there is coming up doesn't have a stop sign there, so they'd be notified so that they don't. Stop and think the other person's going to stop and pull out, so you don't have an accident there, if that makes sense.
I've seen, I've seen signs before that say traffic from one side or the other does not stop.
Right, I mean, but I think that that would be good to have that there to at least notify them. That are there so that they don't pull out thinking the other person's going to stop. That was my only concern.
I agree with the stop sign going to the west, going up the hill. You know, part of the stop signs too was, or part of our rationale early on was because of the driveways.
Yep.
On the south side and having the westbound stop sign there. And. And there's items, if you read Warren's email, there's concerns about sliding and ice, and we also have a twenty mile an hour speed limit there too, so.
So you're concerned about the stop saying going eastbound?
It'll be westbound, I think.
Well, just from the standpoint of the blind driveway where. It's very similar to what we have on Second Avenue. It's a blind driveway from the, coming from the west itself to the right, so.
I've seen that, I've seen the situation in Zambroda where they have some streets that don't exactly align up. The cross street doesn't line up with the zigzag, and I can picture moving in. Eastbound stop sign, back on the other side of that driveway. There's no reason, there's no reason for stop after you go down the hill, pass that driveway, stop before. You know, go twenty feet before that driveway.
Yeah.
And then the uphill one, that's, that's going to be a problem as long as it's not salted or whatever we're going to do with it, however we're going to maintain it.
I think it would make sense if, if we want to move it back further to the west because then they're stopping more on the flat, but. I, you know, the other part of that is. Part of the stop sign, yes, it was for that driveway and is for speed because people just fly through there, and that, that was really the most inexpensive way. To get people to slow down and stop. Minus trying to, you know, put in a, a, what is it, a speed table, and that's quite expensive. Stop sign was all a lot cheaper. Because people do fly, and that, that is a detriment. Yeah.
If you looked at any of the links in Warren's email, and there was, there was a pretty much repeated message in, in his links and comment is that, and he makes a comment too that. Stop signs are not meant to control speed. So I think that's something we need to consider, but at the same time, we were getting complaints about people didn't want to walk on the highway or walk on the street because of the traffic. Yeah, so it's.
And I think.
So it's, it's kind of a, you're trying to make the best decision here based on what we know, and so it's a. There's one suggestion that Warren had was to. Do the radar sign closer to the further east, I guess it was. Where the crest of the hill is at, so you, they know what the speed they're going before they get to the crest of the hill and make that a kind of a, a speed indicator and remove the twenty mile an hour speeds altogether in both directions. Removing the westbound stop sign going up the hill. I can appreciate that for the winter and, and in general, starting up and noise and. But at the same time, the person on Ninth Avenue, we need to make sure they understand that nothing's coming from the left. It's going to stop by coming from the right. They do stop. So that could be confusion there too.
Change it twice a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't change it.
Yeah, that's why you don't want to be, you don't want to be jumping back and forth, and then either, either it's there or you take it out. Looks to me like you just told, just to talk to. Know there aren't many houses here that, hey, there's a stop sign in the corner, be careful.
One option might be too is to remove both stop signs. And just keep the twenty mile an hour speed eastbound on West Center Street. So people are going down where the blind driveways at.
Maybe change the westbound sign to a yield sign. Leave the other alone.
There's going to be a stop as you turn around on the side, so.
But if, I mean, we did that first over on Second Avenue. We put in a twenty mile an hour speed signs before we put the stop sign in.
There's twenty mile an hour signs there at that corner too.
What's that?
There's twenty mile an hour signs at that corner too. Going through that corner. On, on Center Street.
Yeah, I'm saying keep the, keep the westbound twenty mile an hour speed going west to help the people in the blind driveway. Or just people going slower, see there's a car coming out. Take the stop sign, take both stop signs out. And leave the twenty mile an hour speed sign going east. And use that as. Helping the blind driveway situation. It's a little safer if they're going slower.
I guess I, I would, I would. Rather keep the eastbound one in, take the westbound out because. The twenty mile an hour will slow some people down. With the thirty mile an hour, I mean, we saw it can slow people down. It was.
Yeah.
It looks like five mile.
Well, it does, the, the speed signs, they do work because the, I haven't looked at it recently, but the speed signs did say the average indication. Where the sign is at is about twenty nine or twenty eight miles an hour. So people are listening and. Slowing down on the sign, so that's why I think if we could take the current radar sign and move it further east. Where we have a twenty mile an hour speed sign, that would be the. That the. A. Not a positive way of. You know, listening to the residents to stop, because they're concerned about that. They're not really meant to be speed controlled. But if we leave the twenty mile an hours, put the radar sign up there, it's like we do on Minnesota Avenue and, or, you know. It's amazing how many people break when they see that sign there. You can, you can see brake lines all the time, so they are slowing down, so it doesn't work. Yeah, I just, I think there's. And Warren made some great points about the stop sign is not to control speed, even though we thought it was, but really. Technically, the professionals and Ben Dot says that's not really the purpose. It shouldn't be used for that purpose, let me put it that way.
That's when it comes down to it.
What's that?
I said, when it comes down to it, the city is, all the residents. And we've got a lot of people that signed it.
Let me make a motion to take the stop signs down. Take them both down.
Oh. You know. And try it for a while and see what happens. And, and, and leave the other sign up there for the speed sign to watch and see when it. If the speed goes up or not.
I should detail your motion a bit more. So you remove this to the stop signs?
I make a motion to remove the stop signs on, on Westbound Center Street at the corner of Ninth Avenue.
And then, and what about the twenty mile an hour sign?
I'd say about that. I'd say about that. Leave that there.
I just want to make sure.
Take stop sign now. Don't twenty mile an hour. All right, we'll change that part.
Is there a second? Jim?
If you have any issues, they can. The deputy. When it comes to July and they're flying down there? Flying.
I don't, you know, I think, I like, I like your motion, and I guess I don't know if it needs to be amendment or not, but I would. Suggest moving the speed sign, speed radar sign closer to the twenty mile an hour speed where it's at, eastbound.
You want to amend this?
Does that require?
You would accept that amendment? Yeah.
Does, does that, does that require an amendment to move that sign?
If you want to accept that amendment, yeah.
Sure, I'll accept it. I'm good.
Yep.
How far away is it now?
It's a little ways back.
It's a little ways.
It's probably the residential road that goes to the south. Hundred yards away, probably.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, so we have motion to remove both stop signs at Ninth Avenue and West Center Street and relocate the radar speed sign. That's on West Center Street closer to the, at twenty mile an hour speed. Yes, I said.
Yeah, I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Great. Appreciate Warren taking time and bringing that to our attention. All right. We have another. Issue of speeding, and that's in a packet on Fifth Street Southeast. From Josh. Wish, OJ, OJ. There's a couple memos. There's one from October ninth and then earlier one.
April something.
April sixth. Speeding on Fifth Street Southeast, there's a stop sign. At Second Avenue. On Fifth Street, and this is traffic going to the east on Fifth Street into River Park.
So, so they're blowing the stop sign going to the east? That's what you.
Yeah.
They're sorry, that's what they're saying, that they're blowing through that stop sign.
Well, if they're stopping at it, they. Accelerate further down Fifth Street, but there's also in his memo, and maybe Kane can speak to that. Should you come to the podium just real quick? In his memo, he says there was a thirty mile an hour speed sign on Fifth Street. From Minnesota Avenue going east.
That was probably removed a year ago or so when construction went through, if there was one. I don't recall one that short stretch, but. We can definitely put a sign up, a speed limit sign on that from Minnesota Avenue to Second.
Right, I think that's what he's saying is that.
We could do both directions. We could do east and westbound traffic. We could do a thirty. Or a twenty.
In his memory, I think that's. Let me see, at least I've done, and I think it's, I'm not sure about the westbound Fifth Street because it's. Flying up to Minnesota Avenue, but definitely east as you come off, the thinking is you're still at forty. Uh, when you turn on to Fifth Street off Minnesota Avenue, because the thirty's a little bit further up the hill. Towards the church.
Yeah, it's, it's further up the hill, yeah.
So you're saying that. Well, if you're coming from the north, you'd be at thirty, turning onto Fifth Street, but if you're coming from the south, you're coming from a forty mile an hour, right?
That's what they're saying. Somewhere to what, we drew off of Second Avenue, Minnesota. Make the corner, it's thirty.
Usually speed limits don't go around the corner.
This would be at an intersection, not really a corner. Uh, so Minnesota Avenue turning on to Second Avenue, yes, it's a fifty mile an hour zone on Minnesota. Once you get through that intersection on the second, it's a thirty. So. So we could put up a thirty mile an hour sign there on Fifth.
Yeah, let's plan on doing that.
Okay. Both directions, east and west.
I'm not sure of the reason for the westbound thirty.
Well, I guess if there wasn't a speed limit sign in River Park, how do you know how fast to go? Maybe that's not a question drivers have, I don't know. If you pull out of your driveway, Riley, if you live in River Park, if you pull out of your driveway, how fast do you know how to go?
From the sign I saw coming in, thirty miles an hour.
Okay. Thirty sounds good for the eastbound traffic.
Okay. Let's do that.
All right.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Last item on Streets and Roads is our removal, current code of ninety four oh six, point oh six, removal of snow and ice on alley of the streets. We had an issue with ice or snow being piled on to other people's properties or the right of way. Uh, to the point where you can't see the. Ongoing coming traffic at intersection. So I asked Mike and Nico to look at pulling together some. Other cities, how they handle snow and ice and. Um, other cities, how they handle snow and ice and. Um. You know, ours is very simple, it's a paragraph B that you'd see down there. And on the next page is uh. I think it's a Minnesota or a copy of our ordinance with. Now, the current ordinance uh. Unlawful for any private property owner or occupant who push, pile, or otherwise deposits snow or ice from his or her property. On the city alley, streets, avenues, or other property. One proposal was to add. Right of way per Minnesota statute one sixty point two seven fifteen. Which is the Minnesota statute that references uh. Right of way.
You want to add the language from the statute you're saying? For the, for the right of way?
Yeah, it's, it. Yeah, the right of way says um. One sixty point two seven fifteen, right of way use misdemeanors. Except for the actions of road authorities, their agents, employees, contractors, utilities, and carrying out their duties imposed by law or contract. And except as herein provided, it shall be unlawful to, one, obstruct any highway or deposit snow or ice thereon. Do cloud performing goes through fourteen of different versions, so. Referencing that, we could do that, but then there's an issue of how do we enforce it? And with our deputy. Uh, controls and everything, they're probably not keen on misdemeanors, so. Um. Mike suggested the language that's in the memo on your packet, I believe.
I didn't really suggest, I'm not suggesting, I just gathered, we just gathered this for a discussion.
Only thing I worry about on that one is, so I, I think of myself, my driveway goes out. And there's right of way at the end, and I'm blowing my snow. At the end of my driveway. Blows down in the ditch, and the ditch is technically right of way. You know, it's insane that people can't blow their snow in the right of way.
So the one from Wilmer has an ordinance that says this, deposit on boulevards, public streets, so it doesn't say right of way, it says public street. It shall be a misdemeanor for any person not acting under specific contract with the city to move, transport, carry, or otherwise cause to be moved any snow, ice, dirt, or rubbish. Cumulation from private property to or upon the boulevards, public streets, crosswalks, sidewalks of the city. So that's, I think, what you're after, but they make it a misdemeanor, and I do have concerns about. Enforcing that, you know, because Wilmer's a big city with thirty five police officers and an enforcement. You know, division and everything else, so.
Yeah, but here, nor, here, we normally use the ditches for snow storage anyway. If, if the. If the. People, if the people residing there are using it to, city or the snowplow is using it anyway. So putting it in the ditch isn't an issue, but maybe just. For the road surface itself.
So there's, so what we've done to date is Sonny sent them a letter. Asking them not to put on the private property, put on neighbors' property, that type of thing, so I don't know. If that melted or not, but it's not a. It's not a big issue, but it's just something that we don't have any.
It's kind of like people blowing, mowing their grass on the street, isn't it, the same thing?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. You tell them, you see them, you know. The people I've talked to didn't realize it, but once you tell them, they should stop, so. Well, I don't wanna, listen, I don't wanna take any more of our time, but I think this is something, we'll see how the winner goes, and it's something we need to do. But right now, we'll continue to. Monitor that and, and send them letters of asking them not to do that. And referencing our code. If that's all right, we'll, we'll learn that. Adding and just zoning. Providing a discussion about mobile home. May want to speak to that?
I'll ask for it to be on, he's not there. So Carl asked for it to be put on, but he's not here.
I guess, I, I'd like to understand. How a mobile home was approved. They put where it is, because I know they have. If a modular home has to be on a permanent structure, or a foundation, I guess, is, is the, their terminology. Um. And that, I don't know that I would consider that a modular home. You know, that's more of a. It has wheels, yeah. Or manufactured, exactly. Um. And it's not on a foundation. Right? It's.
My understanding is, looking at the lot. There isn't a uh. Connection for sewer going to that lot.
It has sewer water now.
Does it?
Well, it's got a curb stop. I don't know if you had water hooked up or not.
Did they put a sewer line?
Yes, they had water.
I didn't see it in the map.
They have a water service.
Do they have a sewer service?
You put in a holding tank.
Why would, why would we allow that? However, that can allow it, temporary thing, I guess, so it's, you know.
Okay, so right now, our, our R one, the way they're quoted, they're in a single family dwelling, so. That's as far as we go with our description of what constitutes a single family dwelling. We've heard that is a temporary. Um, temporary deal so you can build a house behind it. So we don't know if that's. Ultimately gonna happen, but that's some of the rationale that we were told the city home.
Do we have a date?
This is when your time frame.
Usually if someone says temporary, there's a timeline. Um, associated. I mean, I, I would worry about that, or are, are we saying that? You can, you can put. A manufactured home like that anywhere in the city?
Can we change your organs? Now, we have an ordinance for Mobile Home Park.
Right.
And we don't have one for.
But I think our ordinance says. Uh, foundation.
Double white trailers up on Ninth Avenue.
Yeah, and that, that's a different thing, and there's one over here by the park. I mean, that's a, that's a double Y, that's, to me, that's a modular home, unless I'm looking at it wrong. But.
Well, P and Z wants to. Look at that ordinance, I guess, that's about the only, because we right now, our ordinance is written that it's not a. It's not in conflict with the rest of the ordinance. Until we change your ordinance, there's not much leverage you have.
Aren't all of the other lots?
I see us, I'm. I'm speaking here, but I think that's how I interpreted.
Aren't all the other lots along there hooked up to sewer? Aren't all the other lots longer hooked up to, hooking up to the city sewer?
Well, I think that this one probably will be too eventually, what's going on, I was just wondering if we could do. You know, maybe a temporary or, or variant if there was up for that, or conditional use permit, if there would be something that way for a length of time.
Obviously, if our treatment plan was working, you would have to hook up the sewer. But that's not the case, so. You had the option, same, the other people had the option, thanks, but they don't want to invest the time and money and. He chose to do that. So there will be a time very shortly when the sewer, sewer treatment is working, then. I imagine you would have to hook up by a certain time within a year, you have to hook into the sewer system. Okay, we'll continue on then and. Comes to an issue of uh. Modifying the ordinance, I guess, that's, or looking at that, um, that's opportunity for P and Z to make, take some action. Um, the next item is our. Ordinance restricting the public use of cannabis, and that was part of our public hearing process. So there's an ordinance. Twenty three dash oh five in your packet.
Thank you for your hat, too.
And. Um.
Number two.
Yeah, right, and so we have two options to look at. Twenty three dash oh six A or twenty three dash oh six B?
I think we missed number two on the RFP that there is for planning services. That, I think the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Check marks too quick here.
Okay, update on RFP.
We turned around and um, had reviewed uh three different people that there were that put in their proposals, um. For the first go around, we turned around and went for. Uh, the finals, which were two people that we had, that we thought were, were the, the final people that were there. Um, and um, it was unanimous decision with um, uh, planning and zoning. To go with WSB as um, the contractor for winning that.
I know there was quite a difference in price too, from the two.
Yes, there was, yeah.
Thirty percent difference or something like that, which is considerable. Yeah, it kind of sends up a red flag, because, the reason I say that is because. Both organizations are, like you indicated during your meeting, they're, they're very well insuring staff and everything. And they're both engineers that we rule across whatever company worked for, it's pretty much. For the most part, they're pretty standard. Rates, hourly rates. And um. If you look at the WSB rates, I would say they're. Except for the principal and, and the one uh. I don't know, Lori. Um, the rates are like, the average rate for their quote was like a hundred and twenty four dollars an hour. It seems, that seems low for an engineer, planner. GIS person. So I hope not, I hope compared to, you know, you look at our rates for city engineer or planning services. It's uh twenty, thirty dollars more an hour higher, and that's pretty much. I won't say it's the rule, but that's pretty common salary for professional engineers with advanced degrees or planners, that type of thing, so I just hope that we're. Um. I hope we're getting a good deal if we go with WSB, and, and we don't come and ask back, come ask for more money if they get into it. And um. So that's a concern I have, and I. Part of the evaluation too, did you guys fill out survey evaluation forms?
Uh, we called and then talked to other communities that were using WSB. And so we did a due diligence that there was there on, on doing the research off of it, and, and with that, we got nothing but. High marks that there were off of WSB.
Yeah, I talked to the city, city administrator, Monta Mida. And I cho, chose him because he had so many different things that he used, WSB services. They've been using him for twenty years, they, they haven't redone their, our, since he's been there. Seemed like he was, they were pretty pickled with all of the different services that they offered for him.
We also liked the concept that they had with it, with doing a lot more with, with diagrams. Uh, inside the, the city code itself, where you're looking right now of everything that's written, and you're trying to make people that there are. Try to figure out what, what that really means in writing, and. By doing diagrams and pictures makes it a whole lot easier for people to follow the code. For them to know what to come in with, so that they're, they're aware of it. Uh, we also liked the idea that they wanted to have the community involvement. And they talked about turning around and putting tables over at Billy's and also at the gas stations. To be able to get the input that there are from the, the citizens that there are, you know, so. They had a really good um directive of how they wanted to go about doing things, and so it was the full packet. And again, we turned around and went at them twice. Instead of just one time, to give the, the last two an ability to be able to come in and, and to address it again, so we did our due diligence off of that to make sure we felt. That, that that was the right person to, to go with. And again, we did that without talking about the pricing being the main issue. We looked at it, what we were gonna get for the service that was gonna help for, for designing that.
Okay, well, I just um. I'm just concerned about the low, the, the. The low bid spec. Of being able to do the work they want to do. Uh, for the money that they're giving us or asking for.
Are you afraid they're lowballing us or something, or?
Yeah. When you look at the average hour, a hundred and twenty four dollars an hour versus. You know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars is kind of more of the range. That's my concern. But that's, I think both are equally qualified, it's just a matter of the funding, but that, that's the decision by the P and Z, that's.
Because when it comes down to it, they, they have to deliver in terms of contract. Um. And, and uh, you know, what was stated for delivery. They have to. Right? Stay within their budget.
You have a comment, Sam?
You have a motion for that then?
Well, it said it was an update, so you're looking for.
I'd like to make a motion that we turn around and accept them, and not just an update, but accept WSB. Uh, to rewrite the code.
Would you allow that to say then direct? The city staff to negotiate a contract with them? I mean, we would, we would bring the contract back next month?
Yeah, we could do that. We were.
Well, I'm starting to tell anyway after the first of the year, so, yeah, we can do that.
A second. And just to be clear, this is strictly. Uh, rewriting the code.
Right.
So we would still request on the. Keep the contract with Stan Tech for planning services like we did this year for twenty twenty.
That is correct.
Yeah. Any of the comments? Well, I, I appreciate the motion, but I, I will vote a negative on it just because of my concern, but. There's still a majority, so just to let you know, so. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, aye. Approved? That'd be a good job to get done. All right, now. Looking at the ordinances. So we have the county ordinance and we have.
So Mary, we skipped over the. Ordinance twenty three oh five. That's the moratorium, so there's, there's a.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, the, the two options, how you talked, there are two options, that's two, one is just the thirty point one option for. Twenty three dash oh five, it's just, leaves a motion to the votes, that's the moral of the game. And then the two options I think we're referencing would be the next one. Uh, oh six A and oh six B would be a different.
Right, I thought the options were to either. Adopt something ourselves or adopt the. Urgency, twenty ordinance, twenty three dash oh nine.
That's Romanet two, so that's a separate thing entirely from one, one is just the moratorium on the sale that we had a public hearing on earlier today. But that was, that one, there's no options, one is just ordinance twenty three oh five, moratorium on the sale of THC and cannabinoids, so we would need a vote on that, and then. The next one would have a choice.
Yeah.
Two votes, right, they'd be two separate.
I'm making a motion, we approve ordinance. Say more, no more, ordinance twenty three dash oh five. Second then. Any comments? I think it's pretty clear what it states. Until twenty, January first, twenty twenty five. Saying none, um, all for the voice phone. Saying none, all for the voice phone?
Aye.
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 Aye. Approved? If you want to make a motion for the other one?
Then the other one, I'll just, because Paul isn't on the council, when I described it before, there's two choices. So that's, that that one just relates to prohibiting using that, those products in public, like in parks and stuff. And did you read, read the two?
I I've read through it, yeah.
Yeah, they're they're short. I mean, basically, we had drafted, at your direction, council's direction, we had drafted our option, and then after we had drafted it, the county emailed Renee and said, we're doing a countywide ordinance. And so you could just do that one, and I mean, we reviewed them. Our draft and their draft and they're functionally very similar or the same, so I don't really have an opinion. And then, so that's option B is just to adopt the county ordinance. And the only other comment I would make is that if you don't do anything, if you just don't vote, the county ordinance is in effect and currently applies to the city. The only reason we did an ordinance adopting it by reference was so that you would have a notation in your code to basically inform residents that there is a code provision as like an extra notice, but that's, I mean, if you did nothing, you would just have the county ordinance.
Is is there, is there a big difference between twenty twenty-three oh six A and the county ordinance?
Very little.
Yeah, they're both petty misdemeanors.
It's how they define public place, but if you really read through that, I think it's a sliver of a difference, if anything, so. That's, I I don't take a position on which one, assuming the council wants to ban these products being used in public places. And that's your desire, I think they both accomplish that.
Well, I'd make a motion and if we had, we had out twenty-three oh six A, keep our uncle in control of our uncle versus relinquishing something to the county. That we wouldn't have to. We could change, we can, we can change it as our, at our whim at that point, without having to go through the county. If there's something down the road that we want to see different.
Any other comments? Say none, do a voice vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Oh, same sign. That's approved.
Sneak out.
All right.
Good, we'll be interested in that, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fire department. payroll. Nine thousand seven hundred and seventy against a budget of eight thousand. So I went through the minutes just to see, I was just curious, this is the first responders.
We know why they're over.
I think there's more people than there were.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, because I know first responders, they already said at a previous meeting, they have so many, no?
Yes, I looked at the numbers here and I'm sure those, on the fire department, through September, I counted thirty city calls, of which six were canceled. There's several, a lot of them were or several of their assist lifts, some were multiple vehicle accidents, where they assist high noon with them.
I think when they they get canceled, I think they're already been called. And they already show up at the fire station that there is before they get canceled, so people are going to respond. And I think Ken can answer a little bit more than Johan can, too, with. And Dan, I see him way in the back.
I make a motion, we approve the fire department payroll.
A second.
Twenty-five, I think I counted, like three, twenty-five people. Grow quite good since we set the budget a year ago, so.
I think it's.
Many hands make light work.
That's right.
So any other comments? Fire department payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. It's for lighting package for the brush number one. Four hundred and forty dollars. Is this the same pickup that we're talking about, lift gate?
No.
Different vehicles. Daniel, I have a question for you. And here you, much for you, please.
It's for the the brush one.
So the question about the light package, is that the six wheeler?
So the, what we call brush one now, usually called five nine nine is our red pickup. That's kind of a joint first responder fire vehicle. And so we put the skid pack on it. That, you know, was a great addition to the pickup to make it a more purposeful vehicle. The problems, maybe you can say, the problem is that now that skid pack is blocking some of the lights that are on the back of the truck. So Johan got a bid to move that light around. We've also had a couple of calls where we've used the the new skid pack and there's actually no lights in the back, so we need some lights to light that up. And then just talking, you know, to the light people, they're like, you know, you're, you got old headlights, you don't have spotlight. And so it's kind of a bring it up to speed, fix a couple of the the subsidies with it and then also, you know, make it a little better vehicle. So that's where the the quote came from, and we had two quotes. Uh, this was the cheapest quote, and we had budget to do this with that, and this is a good time to, you know, fix the lighting and, you know, like I said, enhance the lighting.
So I make a motion to approve the lighting.
All second. Okay, this comes out of your budget equipment.
Yeah, it remains the vehicle.
Any other comments? Done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's, same sign. That's approved. Next item was a discussion about the used pumper truck purchase. Your packet that Johan and Dan took together. Maybe others, but yeah. Didn't realize that was thirty-two years old.
Ninety-one.
How many miles? How many miles on it?
Forty.
Six hundred.
No, no, it wasn't.
Say under ten.
Under ten thousand. Oh, yeah.
That's upstairs.
Well, I guess my first comment was, this is something that would have been good to have back in August. When you guys came forward to our budget workshop, and gave us your budget input for first responders and fire department, too, so.
So we did, we brought, we brought this forward, and when we talked about the budget, operating budget, we also brought this forward and talked about, we do need new vehicles. Obviously, we we ordered one a couple of months ago with your approval for the responders. Um, this vehicle plus a tanker was discussed, but we opted to table that discussion until later. So we did bring it up, we have been talking about it.
Okay.
We did.
I think I saw it, just thinking about it.
Yeah.
So this is something that's not new.
And they all say, and unfortunately, you know, you're the only one that was around back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, when we got our other engine up. You know, we have been, as an apartment, we have been having good vehicles, we've had a city that supported us. But we hadn't had probably as regimented of a truck rotation schedule, so we were like, long, 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 oh, we need a new vehicle. You know, we put, we kind of together, you know, got a new engine, and then now since twenty fifteen, we've been kind of sitting back, not really doing much. And so now we kind of ramped it up again, and Johan's been doing great of, okay, you know, all of our trucks have a schedule, and we really should be looking forward across all of our vehicles. So, yeah, it was good, first responder vehicle was the first one. You know, getting that old engine out, getting the second engine is there, like refresh, refresh, the tankers is all there, so it's more about, it's not, you know, it's really not if it's shipping the place, it's really when is the schedule should be replaced.
I think the interesting thing, I'm sorry. I think the interesting thing is that the fire department's going to be getting a check this year from the state, which is a one-time check that's going to be coming for ninety, what was the?
Seventy-nine thousand and change coming on December twenty-sixth.
You know, which is over and above anything that we put in the budget that there was with it. You know, so, and and I was kind of the one that was pushing, going, looking at used vehicles versus new vehicles. Just because it's less than half cost of what it is to get a used vehicle. Um, and and this one that they found that they like, which is option one, is, I would say, cloud, the the paint scheme is the same as our scheme that we have here in Orinoco. You know, so that was a positive that goes along with it. It's got, I think, you said sixty thousand miles that were on it or something, but again, with a diesel and and sixty thousand, I think it's gonna, it's only seventy years old. We'll give it a chance to have that for a good number of years. Um, in which case, I thought next year for our budget, then we could finance it over time, okay, and be able to put it in where it's not affecting what we have for our budget for next year. And so that way, I thought it made sense, because they have to spend that money on on equipment anyway. You know, and so it would fit. And and I thought that this is a a pretty good vehicle that there is that we've been into it.
You know, the timing is great to use that one time, I'm assuming it's one time stadium. So just for clarification, so this, um, down in the financing, you were looking at fifty-seven thousand per year.
And that was at seven years.
For seven years.
Seven year.
So the vehicle's three hundred and forty-eight thousand. And you wanted to put fifty thousand dollars to outfit it. And then the relief fund is donating another fifty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
And here's the rationale behind that. Um, what we'd like to do is we'd like to put a new set of extrication tools on it. And extrication tools now are moving towards battery operated, just like everything else. And to get the three tools that we need, it comes out to about forty-two thousand dollars. So the relief would take care of that, plus probably about five to eight thousand dollars of lettering, right? The color scheme's the same, great, we don't have to wrap it, we don't have to do anything with the stripings. We just got to put our names. So that would probably be something that both those things really could take care of. However, there's another cost that would come into outfitting it with hand tools, halogens, axes, saws, drills, you know, things that we need, possibly some nozzles and maybe some new new hose. Um, we are also thinking of, with this one, we'd spend a little bit of money to maybe add one more seat in the cab or two. Um, because right now this one is set up for four firefighters, and it would be great if we could have five or six. The room in there for them? Correct, there is.
One question I have, you have to move the back wall of the fire department to fit it in there, it looks like it's fairly long.
It is, right, they're not making them any smaller, right?
Exactly.
So this is, this one is thirty-four feet and four inches.
Thirty-four feet?
Thirty-four feet, four inches. That's what this, that's what this, um, the one that, option one that we we'd like to pursue. We we have the two spots over on the east side of the of the fire hall have enough space for this. It's just, it's just a little bit under two more feet larger than our current mainline engines. So we have space.
So question. Are you guys thinking of keeping your other one, or are you selling that and using the money toward it?
So we wouldn't give rid, of course, of a brand new one, or twenty fifteen, which is the newest. But this nineteen ninety-one, you know, we, when we got the new one, we kept it because of various reasons, it was great to have a backup engine. We can have our tanker, which has a pump on it, you know, classify it with ISO as a tanker. And so it's, it was at the time, it made sense to keep it, but now it's, again, that truck needs to go, it's it's, it's old, it's a stick shift, it's, you know, a thousand gallon pump, thousand gallons of water, it needs to go. So in this upper place in vehicle, a pumper, that one would go. We have no idea where it would go in the market, maybe fifteen, maybe twenty-five.
Sure.
It it depends, so that's really shouldn't be the consideration of money, but yeah, it's gonna go and then we'd have a spot. So we wouldn't have to have another home, you know, for something in the.
You say that's one that's got less than ten thousand miles?
Yep.
I was just thinking, why I was asking that question is, at some point, we we have to start thinking about the redundancy from one side of the highway to the other, you know, if something happened to our bridges, who knows? You know, to have.
I just don't know if we have a place to put it, unless you'd put it out as a sewer plant or something if there was.
That way direction. Thirty-seven years old, you know, and the guidelines are, you know, really, it's, you know, we could get, we could get a newer, older one at when we're ready, so let's say have another, really, that would be a better decision than trying to maintain this old thing somewhere.
Rimming problem was finding parts for it.
Nineteen ninety-one, it's got, it's got a chassis that's worth about seventy-five thousand, isn't it? The chassis alone, is it gas or diesel?
Diesel.
The old one's diesel.
Old one's diesel.
They're all, they're all diesel.
Diesel, it's a.
So you're looking at financing four hundred and ninety-eight thousand then, is that right?
Nope.
It's three forty, three forty-eight. Plus fifty thousand.
Four hundred-ish, four hundred there, and then you have, like you said, almost eighty coming from the state.
Seventy-nine or whatever.
That can be used. And he just gave some recommendations of financing, you know, for the last truck, you did ten-year financing, you could do seven-year financing.
You can do five, you can do three.
We could pay it off early if we're we're running good after that, too, so.
So the other question, and this is kind of going forward, just, we're kind of, we're still talking about fire department, first responders, budget items. And my concern is that this fifty-seven thousand dollars every year financing is is something that would be considered to be part of the budget then, you point for next year?
So my question would be, it should be, the the budget that we're asking for is operating budget. The apparatus budget might be a different budget.
Different line.
So, and that kind of.
If you, if you look at it, sorry, sorry, Ryan, if you look at it, though, you should be saving. I I had a schedule that we put out and we talked about in our meetings.
Yeah, we did.
And we should be saving to to replace, properly replace our fleet with brand new, I mean, brand new, we're not talking brand new. But if we were to do brand new, it would be two hundred and thirty-two thousand and change every year that we would need to put away, so we could purchase new equipment or new new apparatus when it comes due. So we're not asking for that.
Right, if you're. While I've been on, we've never had truck payments in a budget. So our last truck, you know, we, you know, relief paid the first two payments, the city picked up, you know, the rest, but that was financed by the city. You paid for it out of whatever, you know, CIP fund or wherever you paid for it, so it was never a budget item.
Well, no, on that one, I'm not sure.
We got it, you got a ten-year lease and we made the first two payments, that's how that was our go.
So this year's budget, you know, we're going from a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's fire department, first responders and EOC, which is small, but the budget amount is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars this year, and next year's is three hundred and seven thousand. And that's really made a big impact on overall tax rate, tax likely going forward. So we had, we'll be talking about a workshop here later on, but but somehow, I I, I'd see that three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seven thousand this year. And I would hope it doesn't grow by another hundred and twenty percent next year. So we gotta be
I think you're correct.
More diligent in next year's budget, not alone this year's budget.
And I think, again, going back in history, you know, we did very little incremental things in our budget. And I think again, going back in history, you know, we did very little incremental things in our budget and I, I, you know, so this year was kind of the, okay, you know, salaries just haven't been commensurate with, you know, the industry. We haven't had the rates.
All good reasons.
But, you know, this is kind of a boom to get up current and then now I think we'll have a better.
And I think you had to do new air tanks and there's new equipment that needed to be done too. That was aged to that same.
We're trying to get replacement of the turnout gear. We're trying to get the replacement of the radios. So unfortunately, we're hitting some of these things that you know, again, hindsight, we maybe should have been doing more. Okay, yep, radios need to be replaced, you know, every year we're doing something, so we're, I think we're doing.
I guess where we're going. Your apartments are getting bigger and that's great, but at the same time we need, the council needs to be fiscal responsible to our residents too, because the tax rate's going up about twenty-five percent this year. We'll get some feedback, but anyway, that's, that's my concern for twenty twenty-four, but going on, uh, we really need to kind of rein that in a little bit more, but we can talk more about it in detail in our workshop, so. The financing, the leasing is at whether it's seven years or leasing, that's really, is that really a city thing that we need to look at?
Yes, yeah, so we've been trying to be very clear that, you know, that is the city's decision. Johann, I'm trying to give you some food for thought of how do you want to pay for it, but ultimately it's how do you want to pay for it? You know, you've been bond, you can get a lease, you know, you could do different things and we had, you know, I had given Sunny a couple of different leasing companies that, you know, she could go to if she wanted to get, you know, different information. So, and you know, Johann's got stuff, so again, part of it is, is you know, it's your flexibility. How do you want to pay? You have some of that money. You could keep that money and then do ten-year financing to get the payment down or you know, how do you, you can use that money to pay for the first couple of payments.
What we could have said in the executive summary and I, and I don't think I did was with that eighty thousand dollars or seventy-nine thousand dollars and change from the state coming at the end of next month, we should be able to make the first year's payment, plus take the rest of that, put it into you know, tools on the truck, plus take the ten, plus take the other fifty thousand dollars that relief voted to approve last week. And we could have this truck coming without worrying about the budget for at least twenty twenty-four. Or increasing the budget.
So if you would give us, uh, to give the city a more detailed number that we're gonna be looking at for leasing or whatever we decide to do, but whatever the final number is, then we'll talk to probably Mike Baboni. Um, he's our financial planner and he can give us some ideas of how we could maybe take a little CIP and then lease rest of it or whatever combination we use his expertise to kind of help us through this, so.
I have one question. Did you use a cooperative purchasing alliance to locate these?
Yes.
That's a competitive bidding thing, so you can't you have to bid for things that are over a certain dollar value, but you can you can buy goods or, or products that you need through what are known as cooperative purchasing alliances, and that's like a company that does the bidding for you. It's like an exception to the.
We actually belong to two.
Right, there's only two, I think. There's basically two.
Two big ones, yeah, and we belong to those. Um, just like we did for the truck for the first responders, we use state bid. So that F two fifty was forty-nine thousand and change versus if you were I to walk into Ford, it'd be seventy-eight thousand.
So then the other question with that is if you got these through the purchasing alliance, did they give a deadline within which you have to purchase them?
I guess the risk is, you know, they could, they could sell at any point in time, so that's probably the risk for us is, and we're showing you a truck that we hope is still there.
Well, I think that sometimes they do hold them for a period of time. Like I've seen that, that's what I was asking.
Okay, yeah, we didn't.
Nope, we wanted, we wanted council's approval to move forward before we said we put a signature or anything on.
Right, promissory notes went out?
And like I said, Jim said, you know, we were looking, which would be higher amount, you know, longer lead time and then but for the, this one makes sense. Hey, we get, you know, just like buying a couple of year old year's car, you know, you get a lot of deals, so this one, you know, custom cab, you know, it's pretty, probably very elegant rig for us. You're right, it's got high miles, but once it hits us, it's gonna get, it's gonna get a hundred, two hundred miles a year now, the rest of its life, so it's gonna get babyed. So, um.
Can we do a motion or?
What are you looking at?
Cause I'm, I'm just, you know, I know we need to do that, but I just to make sure that the truck is even there too.
Right.
If we have the approval to look and see if it's there.
Yeah, then the financing, you know, I guess, again, it's your, what do you need to make your decision on how you want to pay for it? So if you want to go forward or do you want to do your research for the funding? Yeah, I think, like I said, you're trying to articulate, you, you have the money to probably not have to make a payment for until twenty twenty-five.
Well, yeah, that would, that would be true too, so with the state with, with the state, that seventy-nine thousand dollars coming from the state. That'd be your initial payment, right?
Right, but I mean, it's going to, yeah. Going to, to a good purpose that there is behind it and, and use it the way that the state wanted, wants us to use it.
Exactly, you have to use it for that, so you hate, you hate to lose that. And like, if, if you're saying we won't need to work out any plans until twenty twenty-five, that gives us time to work with Mike Baboni. If he's the one that's got, he's the one that brings, brings all of the big numbers for how to do it.
The nice thing about having a, a used apparatus or pre-owned apparatus is we can get it and get it into service probably within a few months, three, four months, right, depending upon what we have to outfit it with. If we were purchasing a brand new engine, it would be somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one point two million.
It's gonna take you forty-eight or twenty-four.
Twenty-four to thirty-eight months.
Well, I think we could make a motion, um. You know, you make a good point about the, the seventy-nine thousand is next year's more than next drill. More than next year's down payment. Um, and we can look at the leasing options after that or what, no, I take that back.
I think.
So what does it cost to get to actually buy it? I mean, we.
So the purchase was three hundred and four, list price, three forty-eight.
I mean, you're gonna have to figure out how you want to pay for it. You just wouldn't have to make a payment.
Right, so I'm, I'm playing with the, the, talking to Mike Baboni and, and coming back with a better plan of how we're gonna finance it or what we're gonna do. Sounds great to get into, but we need to have a good program of how we're gonna continue that. That's my hesitation about making a motion right now, but cause I know you're looking for a smack direction.
It's not gonna stick around forever.
Well, we don't know. We, I mean, we don't know. It could sit there for six months. It could be gone tomorrow.
I mean, but, but the color scheme is good. I mean, we look at everything, it kind of fits and especially with you makes a whole lot difference in buying something new. You know, um, especially with the way we're gonna use it in the city. I mean, it's gonna be good for a lot of years, so.
These things that'll help our ISO rating too is we're gonna have more, um, pumping capacity, right? This is gonna be a fifteen-hundred gallon pump versus thousand, so that's gonna help us. We can put six firefighters hopefully in this instead of four.
And the idea with being able to act on it sooner than later. If that one's gone, then these others, the color scheme.
You might have to wrap them in everything else that way, which would be better. I mean, this, this, yeah, this one has.
Checks a lot of boxes and like I said, having some of the money that I said we're getting next month just seems like.
An ideal, it just worked out well.
So the company that owns this is the city?
It's called Carco. Um, they're, they're a dealership. Carco out in San Clai.
So if, um, if you call them tomorrow and say, we've taken, what's the timeframe for the payment in the three hundred and forty-eight?
It kind of depend on how the.
That's my concern of making that commitment, but yet we don't have a plan to finance it. We talked a lot, but we don't have a plan.
Well, I, I, I have a feeling with this, with this program in place with the, with the state giving the seventy-nine thousand dollars out Artco's probably aware of that and knows, and knows how, knows that what speed the state actually moves to to get those things taken care of. I'd like to think they.
Typically, when you take out a note on, on an apparatus like this, it's, it's a one, one time a year payment. You don't have to make a monthly payment. So we could, we can discuss when we want to actually make that first payment.
I think we want to make it the end of the year, so you got all your savings.
Well, then for the, and again, if you remember the last truck, you know, we bought, we got, we received it at the end of the year. I think it was like November timeframe. And then we paid for the first payment, we paid a little extra to get it into January because you guys wanted to make, you know, January, like yearly payments. So our first name was like thirty-eight thousand for that truck and then that was thirty-six. So we kind of paid extra to move the start date.
Isn't there rules in there for municipalities to get lower interest rates?
We are a tax exempt status, we get the tax exempt loan rate.
Yeah, it was a very competitive rate, yes. Let's begin, it's flexibility.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Absolutely.
What would it cost to hold it?
Seventy-nine thousand.
I have good questions.
Uh, it just, just, um. But I feel like we can't move forward until you guys say.
We have to make a motion.
You have to make a motion that we move forward with this and then everything falls into place. And of course, we'd be working with whomever and, you know, city, city clerk, you know, whomever to, to work on the financing, you know, and get that in place.
So otherwise we're just tire kickers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think that this, this kind of fits in, looking especially for a new one. Very expensive.
Well, I think knowing, I think knowing the one has to be replaced. Yeah, I mean, this, this bits ticket, yeah, eighty, almost an eighty thousand dollar down payment. You give it to me by the state, it's kind of a no-brainer. What would it cost you? It costs you, it costs you twenty grand to wrap it.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and make.
I make a motion to, uh, proceed on purchase of this vehicle.
Second. Final comment was, and this is I like the idea. It's just I wish this council, the city would have a little more time to really look at it. So we would have called the Mike Babonis to figure out how we could finance it, you know, we had three days, four days, whatever. So this is something I think is really taken to heart from the fire department, first responders, when big ticket items come to us, really think about what we need to do to prepare to give you a good answer. I, I feel a little there's risk, low risk here because we don't know how we're gonna finance it, but I think there's good intent here. It's a good, it's a good deal and there's no question about that. And we got this carrot out here with seventy-nine thousand to take care of it, so first year or so.
And I think again, artists, we've been talking more between city and the fire department. I think this dialogue has been good. I think we have brought it up, but probably wasn't the, you know, again, some of things probably, okay, you know, we're talking about this. You realize we're talking about this and we're gonna bring it up here at some point, so.
Good reminder.
I understand.
Yep, okay. Any other comments? See, none of those in favor, say aye. All right, let's, um, start rolling some figures together and.
You got it.
Thank you, thank you for support.
Somebody can contact Mike Baboni then?
Yeah, we'll do that, right, and I'll work with her. For responders payroll.
I know that's up too, from what we had budgeted off of that, um. But I think it could, you have more people that are first responders.
I make a motion, we approve the first responders. One second. A second? You, Jim? Very briefly, through September, they've had thirty-five city calls and ninety-two township calls.
No, we were supposed to get some more money, I think, on the township.
Yes, and I started looking at that today to really see where that's at and it looks like I haven't found anything yet, so I'm gonna go to the supervisor of the township or Renee and I, well, exactly what's been discussed and let's come across some other things here. I know there was some discussions, but I haven't found the status. Unless, Johann, do you know? Do you have any input about the township funding? For the first responders? Or been part of that discussions?
I, um, I think it was still in this discussion. The last time, the last time we spoke with Sunny about that was that she said that she had verbal confirmation that the township would be um, giving us forty thousand for our next, next year's budget. So I believe we asked for eighty-one and change for the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, and that about half, that puts, that puts the township a little bit more in line with the two-thirds of the calls we run there versus a third in, in the, in the city. If you look at what happened last month, we ran fifteen calls in the township and one in the city. So disproportionate was, was definitely there, so.
But forty thousand, you think it's the last number talked about?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. We approved the payroll, right? Okay. Um, moving down to Gold Rush. Gonna do EDA. Uh, EDA, we have a meeting Tuesday night. Chris Geeson will be here. Um, and he's gonna give us an update of training and EDA training, I should say.
So I think that's one of the what's on, I think that that's one of the things that I'm on, since that's what on data was on before.
I think so, yeah. It's on our agenda. You know, come to the meeting, six-thirty Tuesday night.
Six-thirty Tuesday.
Um, the, my hesitancy, I'm not sure if that, we were talking, if that requires a, a resolution or anything like that to fill a vacancy or not, or just a.
Or, or what, the EDA?
Yeah.
It's a council.
It's on our EDA agenda to talk about it Tuesday night.
But what's in the file? I mean, you should have adopted the bylaws when you formed the.
There were two from council that we're supposed to be on, right? It's the two people from council, we're supposed to.
We'll say something.
He will have to be appointed by, by the board.
Typically, but Rebecca, wouldn't they be appointed by the council or by the EDA board?
I apologize, yes, the council from you guys.
That's typically how it is, or, you know, statement in the bylaws that the council shall appoint two members and be specific about how it you know, it's not that the mayor, mayor gets to pick, although I think it could say that, but I think typically what it says is the, the city council approves two members, something like that, so without me reading it, I think that's what you do. I'm almost certainly, that's what you do.
I agree. I believe it's that the mayor is supposed to nominate and then the council would then approve is, is what's in the actual text.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we can we'll talk about Tuesday night. December, meeting is December the twenty-sixth, so there'll probably be a January where it's taken care of officially, so. You're more than welcome to join, that's public. So, um, I make a motion, excuse me, we approve the, um, twenty twenty-four donations or twenty twenty-three donations for twenty twenty-four for the town. Full of eight thousand and one dollar. The spreadsheet in your package shows the distribution to the various organizations this year, so. Our expenses continue to get a little more, so it's a little bit less. And, um
A second.
So a second.
So did we have more, uh, expenses than we had, than we had coming in?
Um, we had not quite the same number of vendors, but more expenses. The expenses, you know, some of the cases almost doubled.
And you see, we have a number in red at the top, I wondered.
That's it.
I see we have a number in red at the top. Something's not right.
No, no, it just, it should be black, but I just left it when we first started talking about this, so it's nothing indicating anything bad or anything like that, it's just.
We were just looking for leftover too that we have, um, you know, that we have some to work on for next year.
They usually keep three to five or something like that.
Well, this is where you got eight thousand, I think it's.
All right, any other comments? All right, any other comments? See none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ose, it's approved. Public Works. Kane has some funding left to cover those purchases in your packets. He's got a memo on each one. He had a chance, he's identified the uh. The account to pay for and uh. I think you're using every dollar, right? And walls give you a bunch of money too?
Uh, just staying within my budget.
Yep, you are.
Respectfully. Uh, the first item there, this would be out of the water utility. Uh, we need to update one of our line locators. Uh, if you guys have questions, I can. Answer your questions, but. Request is uh up to five thousand dollars for a second locator.
Why don't you just go through your four?
Okay.
Perk or five purchases and then we'll come back to your public works assistant.
Okay, uh, so the second one is a, a new, another round of picking tables for the parks. Uh, last year we bought six. Figure this year we can buy ten with some, some of the budget we have left over. Uh. Third item. Uh, we're gonna skip over the public works assistant. So third item, uh, some skid steer attachments for our new skid loader. Uh. It says here up to five thousand, but I got some numbers that are actually below my uh. Spending threshold. So we can just remove that because the attachments are less than fifteen hundred.
Okay.
There were some very expensive attachments that I added here for reference, but I did find some, some cheaper uh. But well-built uh attachments, so forget that from your agenda, it's beneath my threshold. Uh. Where are we at? Here we are. Uh, oh, a lift gate for one of our pickup trucks. Uh. Everything's getting bigger, everything is getting heavier, uh, and having a lift gate on back of one of the trucks would help out. Uh. Eighty two grinder stations are gonna be heavy. And uh I can see water, sewer, parks, streets and roads. And facilities, pretty much the five departments within public works. I can see all departments benefiting from that lift gate. Uh. Whether it be lifting uh gas cans, lawnmowers, you name it, I think, uh, I think it has a place in the city, a lift gate. And then the final one here is uh. Is uh some snow blowers. Uh, snow blowers are really expensive, they got very expensive. I got one at home in the garage. It was uh twenty eight hundred dollars. So. I would like to buy something along that line to have a, a, a powerful one and then potentially another smaller one. Sidewalks. Uh, and of course, I'm thinking for the treatment facility as well. There's a lot of walkways and raised platforms and. There's a lot. So I think uh having a big snow blower that can handle things. But then having a smaller one that could kind of do some lighter work. And so I, I put five thousand dollars in there just as a. A discussion, you know, if, if you spend twenty eight hundred and you find another one for sixteen hundred, I mean, I just. I needed some, some wiggle room there, so.
Could you possibly use the big one for?
Well, stuff.
The smaller stuff, could you get five? For a year?
Yeah. You, I mean, you don't want to get something too big, right? Then it's, then it's overkill and.
How big were you thinking?
Thinking more for the treatment plant too.
Treatment plant, lift stations, uh. Yeah, it.
Is this just a walk behind or is this just an attachment?
These are walk by.
Inerrons or something along those lines, I think it was.
My experience with big snow blowers is nobody ever wants to get them out and use them.
Right, right. So you, you kind of wanna, it's a, it's a trade off. You want something powerful, easy, maneuverable.
Yep.
You know, but then again, those little push ones, uh, those things work great too. There's. Different machines for different snow events, so. Uh, like I said, it's just a starting point. Uh. You know, and of course, if I find something uh within my spending limits, you know, I.
Down there, how many miles of walkway they gotta do out there? I should go down there, I haven't.
Yeah, no, it's, it's quite a bit, it's up here. Yeah, and then with the lift gate, you'll at least be able to put the snow blower in the back of a pickup.
Yeah.
That way with one person.
And you wouldn't have to get the big gray.
Exactly.
All right, I make a motion, we approve the purchase of the uh four items. Utility locator, picnic tables, truck lift gate and snow blowers.
A second.
And um. These are all purchases you can still do this year.
Correct plan. Yep, yep, we're, you're gonna be seeing awesome spending here in the next month and. And uh using up some of those funds that. You know, we try not to spend, spend up all our budget early in the year, you know, we try to make it last and, and there is some money left, so. We're gonna spend in here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ose. That's approved, now your public works assistant.
Yeah, so uh in previous budget talks, we've talked about uh adding a additional public works uh member and. You know, if we want to start that employment, if we want to start that first of the year, you know, we should start uh posting. Figure out what that posting should be, what the pay should be and, and start uh getting applicants. Uh. I know there's, you know, sewer operations won't be. Up and running until, you know, spring, March, April, but. Think what that would give us is if we could hire somebody, say, January, February, to get some of that training, some of that. Uh, in-house training done. That way, when the sewer does go live, we'll have, uh, there'd be four public works employees. Who would be uh. Ready for those operations to, to begin, so.
You already have two now, right? Is that what it is?
Yep, yep, it's myself and two public works assistants. Uh, and as time allows and as the city grows, you know, maybe those assistants can become. Different tiers, maybe elite position, maybe elite sewer or water and uh. But for now, uh, cross trading is key. Uh, four of us will all be uh cross trained in every department and uh. As well as being on call for uh. For the years to come, having, developing an, an on-call schedule and, and uh.
Rotation.
Yep, a rotation type, yep. So, you know, four people, uh, once every four weeks, you'd be on call, weekends, nights, holidays, so.
That's something we talked about in our personnel policy, because right now we don't have an on-call.
Correct.
Comment in the, in our public personal policy, so that's something we need to, don't forget. So is your plan just to be a public works assistant with just a general mechanical, electronic background and no water license? Is that your intent?
You know, the, the water license, it, if you, if you don't come from a city, you're not gonna have that. So uh, it kind of limits, it limits us when we say you gotta have a, a class D or class C water license, kind of. Limits our, our candidates, right? But if we say. You know, what, I guess what does that uh. Say?
So what would the difference, ballpark, what would the difference be if we say you have to have? Say a class C versus not? Cause does that take you into a much higher? Scale?
I, I don't think so, sorry, Jim.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it's a matter, I think, the limiting factor that you're looking at. What does it take for time for somebody to, to get that class?
Yeah.
C water license if they need it to get it, what, what kind of time elements?
So you need one year to get your D and then you need uh another two years to get your C for water. And then of course sewer, we all know, takes eight years to manage a sewer plant, right?
Does John Kingsley work at Torz Water License or?
John does have his class D water.
He does have.
Yep, and that takes a year on the job experience, so. So uh.
You'd have one that'd be working up and another one coming in behind.
So what, what class does our water system require? Class C?
Ours is a D.
A D, it requires a D?
Yep.
No, they're kind of like, kind of like a boiler's license, as long as you're working underneath somebody else, you can be one step down or something like that.
Uh, you can be involved with certain uh tasks, certain duties, but when it comes to like actual testing, that would be done by a licensed operator.
Let me make a motion, we approve hiring a third public works assistant. Starting early twenty twenty four.
A second.
With a rate of. Twenty to twenty five, is that what you're thinking or?
Well, uh, sorry, sorry, rather, let me find this here. Uh, so I highlighted some, some things in there and. And just to update this, you know, this is a job description, wage. Who the application needs to be sent to and when we're gonna post. When's the deadline? That's, those are the, the highlighted items there.
This, this looks like it's a repeat posting from twelve, nine of twenty two.
Yep.
Is that what that is?
Yep, yep. So this is what we used for uh.
John.
John Kingsley.
So what would be? So I'm asking two purposes, what, how really great do you want and what should I put in the budget? I got twenty five now for the budget.
I, it's actually, it's not, it's twenty. Twenty seven, I thought.
Twenty seven, twenty eight.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we need to get into the details right now, but.
Could be a range depending on their experience?
Uh.
Or I suppose you gotta post it.
Here, let me.
But you could post a range based on this.
Could we, I'm guessing what I'm trying to say is. What I was asking for tonight is, let's get this posting out there and let's have somewhat of a date in mind, right?
With no salary range?
Let me look at the budget real quick here, Ireland. Bear with me.
I think you're, I think you're right about twenty seven.
I, I think it is too.
That was kind of like the max. I put it as being in the maximum, I guess, that's.
I've got it right here. Uh. Twenty seven is the proposed budget, you're correct.
That's the proposed budget?
So the range would be twenty two to twenty seven?
Okay, twenty two to twenty seven.
Okay.
And you can do it based on their experience?
Yep. And then, so if we want.
Better effective posting if we have an hour wage.
I think so. I think we want to put something on there, not leave it open.
That's why I want to make sure. We'll clear that with a motion then.
Okay, and then do we, I mean, I'd like to shoot for first of the year. Uh, do we take applications until a certain time? Do, how, how do you guys see this? Play now?
I would say.
Holidays isn't the greatest time.
How soon, how soon after the first year is, do you think you'd need him?
Uh, it'd be nice to have somebody uh February one. I think that'd be a good goal.
Maybe you uh set a cutoff date to like mid-January.
Or something like that.
Or, well, even before that, because you got to interview. Right? And you want them on board?
It'd be nice to have somebody on board February.
Yeah, so probably the first.
We can work out the details.
Yeah, that's.
Staff.
It's.
I guess as long as you guys get kind of where we're going with this. Renee and I can work out some of these details and, and get postings started and uh.
Well, January fifth is the first Friday in January, so you had, you had your application, didn't you, by then? Be interviewing the week after.
So we'll uh.
You know, let's let it go a week after that too, because there's so many changes that happen. The first part of January with jobs, a lot of people kind of move around. That there might be saying, okay, somebody else is more interested because of other things that happened that I would give it a couple of weeks in January.
So we have a motion for um public works assistant, third public works assistant, range of twenty two to twenty seven, starting. On February twenty twenty four. Second. Any other comments? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ose. That's approved.
Uh, we'll, we'll keep the council updated with the job search, how about?
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Personnel items, um. There's a memo in your packet regarding city council meeting page attendance. And we're going through the attendance sheets now. There's some questions related to. Oh, yeah, memo. Regarding just the clarification on non-standing committee meetings. Um, and also um alternative representatives going to meetings. Where they're replacing the uh. The designated one for standing committees. I think it's.
Which, what was that?
I apologize. My computer would got turned on to auto save. And I had a packet done and Riley started writing on it, so I had reprint the whole packet and I must have missed that one.
Oh, man.
Yeah. You want, meaning grant, take, make a copy that quick?
Yeah, we should probably be there real quick. It would be, yeah. Move to the next. What's that? We move to the next and circle back to that one. Next item is um. Admin staff hiring update.
Yeah.
So two and three together is a separate.
Pardon?
No, go ahead.
So. Uh, what's in there? There's, there's a line. Okay, um, so the interim uh city administrator replacement. Uh. I think everyone received the memo from Mike.
Well, Paul didn't.
Uh, oh, no, you didn't, sorry. Uh, do I have a copy of it? We, we can talk about it. So i- in um. Mike's email. Mike stated that we do have a, a person um. That we're looking at hiring. And there's questions about the insurance. Coming on as a contracted person for the interim and the insurance.
Thank you.
And. So the question was. I guess you can.
Yeah.
Talk more to it, but it was about the insurance and the life.
Well, I think that was kind of the side issue. Um, it's kind of hard because it was an attorney paying privileged memo. The whole point of doing that was that I don't. Say it, but basically, long and the short, nutshell of it is. This person provided the city a draft contract. Uh, it's, it's a person, I think, who is a former. Former uh city staff person in the local city who's now retired, but does this on a contract basis with cities around the area. And they had provided their temp, their, their contract, which I believe their lawyer wrote, which is an independent contractor contract. And so I'd sent it to our labor attorneys and they had objected to that because the nature of her employment is as, as an employee, not an independent contractor. And then there's legal reasons why that matters that are really too hard to explain without you. Without you, that's the nutshell basically of, of it. And so then there's other issues with it. If you try to do it. One of them is insurance, one of them is how the contract is structured. Um, but it's really hard to describe, to be honest with you, without reading it. So I think that's, that's as much as I should say about it.
Okay.
I mean, I apologize, I just wasn't planning on you. I would have figured that out earlier, I would have sent it to you, but. So.
So th- this person has been um doing this for fifty years.
Yep.
Um, or close to fifty years. Um. And is currently a uh interim city administrator for another city, training in the process of, of training. And almost completed training, a new city administrator. Um, I've checked out references, references, check out grade. Um. Anyway, we want to be able to go forward in, in talking with Mike regarding the insurance and I talked with the candidate about the insurance. And um she had stated she does have the insurance, but we have to make sure it's the, the insurance. And, um, she had stated she does have the insurance, but we have to make sure it's the, the insurance that Mike is talking about. Um, and there are some options too, if she does not have that, she is willing to purchase that insurance. But it will pass that cost in her hourly salary, or hourly charge onto the city. Um, so we'll have to see what that is, if we have to go that path.
Now you say she'll pass the, the insurance cost to the city, that's if what she already has doesn't qualify.
So, so really, that's more of a minor issue, so I had looked at this, I'd sent Jim an updated email directly, cause I looked at that more. And i- it is, I mean, independent contractors like me and Joe, and any contractor you hire this. Cita, any contractor is gonna indemnify the person they're working for. Like if you hire a construction person to build something at your house, you know, they're gonna have insurance, and you know, that's just normal. But that's really the side issue, I mean, the, the problem is, so you could ask her to put that in the contract or not. But, but the core issue is, i- it's really, we view an employment relationship, not a contractor relationship.
Exactly, there's difference between contractor and employer relationships, you're totally different.
So, right, and, and so I was trying to, that is one, I mean, the insurance is one thing, and then other. In the memo, it goes through the case law in Minnesota that describes what an employee is versus a contractor, and there are certain elements that. Taken to effect, and so basically. The, the, the long and the short of it is, if you wanna move forward with it, that's not our advice. Our legal advice, if you want us to try and tweak the contract to make it better, I talked to our labor attorney about that. And he thinks that's going to be difficult to do, like there's really no way to do it, but he's willing to look at the contract and possibly work with it, if that's what you want. Um, Jim's concern that he expressed to me directly was the timing of it, that, you know, we're kind of underwater a bit here. Um, yeah, I don't have the words in your mouth, but that's, you know, we need.
You're summing it up.
Yeah, just in a nutshell, we're in a lot of it, so. Then we need somebody to, to start, so those are the considerations, the practical, the legal considerations, it's just that structure of that contract in general. So that's, that's what I can say about it. Without getting way detailed, spend a half hour, you know.
And so the, in the comment that I'll make is, and I asked her about her contract, and that's the contract that she's used. For years, with other cities. And, and they have gone with it, but I, you know, there's some things that, that we need to find out. But. I, and I, and I will check with, um, L M C.
I've already left a message for L M C.
Okay, great, yeah. To see whether L M C covers that person in term, you know, being in that role.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that after.
What will L M C have to cover?
Well, yeah, just, just like, you know, all employees basically have immunity. You know, as their city, cause they're, they're employees, they work under city, under the city, and then there's a question about whether. Contractors have that, if they do something that causes a lawsuit.
You're, you're talking about like administrative errors that.
Errors or omissions or whatever, could be anything, could be, could be.
Well, you know, it's something she might need to carry too, is she have to carry errors and omissions insurance.
So you're gonna continue to. Continue to work with her and.
Yep, gonna work with her, make sure she's got the insurance, if she doesn't, then we'll determine what insurance she needs, but I, you know. We, we, we need, we need to move her, move her ahead, we need to get her started. We need to do some amendments or updates to the contract. Based on what, uh, Mike has, has mentioned. But we, we need to get somebody in.
Right, I think it's important just to make sure we minimize the risk and, and how about those?
Make sure what?
Minimize the risk, and make sure we're. Clear on both in the contract, that's why it's, it's nice to have something in writing versus anything verbal.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta be all contract.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep, and, and with that, I will mention, um. She will be very flexible on hours, I know we had set a minimum of, of, uh, three days per week. And she said, yes, I can do three days per week, if you would, if at some point you would rather I do two days. One week, four days the next, depending on the load, she said I could do that. Um, she will work business hours except, um, council. Uh, nights of council.
One of the definitions of a contractor, you can't dictate their hours, is my understanding.
That's one of the factors.
Yeah, and I, and I did read that from L M C too, but you can, if it's stated, if, and if, well, if she's agreeing to it, putting it in her contract. If it, if it aligns with us, so. Okay, so, once we get that aligned, we wanna, we wanna move forward. And, uh, get somebody in here, and, and we do have one applicant for the. Admin assistant. So. We're gonna enter, get that interview going, so.
Both portions of conversation. Or could admit, could she, that person be brought in, training this person, and this person starts? You know, Renee, she needs, she's, she's getting underwater, I'm sure, there's a, there are all the stuff going on here.
I think it's all gonna be coordination and how we work that thing, okay, and we don't have all the details of exactly when that's gonna be.
Gotcha.
All right.
I'm gonna cut and do this one, or do you want me to do my next one?
Oh, the.
We can go back to this one, please.
Went back to this one?
The P T O, yeah.
Okay. On this one, I'll be, I'll be glad to clarify if there's some questions on this one, okay.
On the, um.
Yeah, cause I, I understand what you're saying, you know, that, you know, hold on, there were. Uh, some meetings that we were doing, where we did combination of first responders and fire. That we would do together with Sunny when we were here meeting after that, so there were some other things that I can clarify with you.
Well, that's. Yeah, today we get. It's our saying that the standing committees are the ones we pay for, that are, um, standing committees that are posted on the agenda. But in a lot of those. Fire meetings, staff meetings, those weren't really posted meetings.
I think that they might have been, cause those were the ones where we were having a joint mission between, well, I'm just trying to think.
They weren't on.
Whoa, was there, Sunny was there, there. Party number was there, and first responders were there. But it was, it was a formal meeting that we did every three months, and that's part of what we were working with. For the fire trucks and getting used equipment and everything, and so it was, was that coordination, so.
They weren't monthly meetings though.
No, it was like every three months we would have those, and that's what going on last year, so. Um, those are the things that, that were there, I understand the other part of it, okay, no question about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but I just, if I needed to clarify that with you and, and construction, I didn't put anything down on any of those. You know, so, and then that's just a part of staying up with what's going on with the city, so.
So we may wanna. Review that list with Renee.
Oh, yeah, I'll be glad. Yeah, and if you wanna go with you too, I have no problem with that.
We have to fill out that list, yeah, right?
Yeah, Rylan and I kind of went through, we even went back through meetings and sort of checking off, and then. I had given it to Jim the one day, or I thought I emailed it out, actually.
You did, you emailed, and then I came and filled mine out and brought it back in, so.
Yeah, so just wanting to get that finalized, but then we, I was questioning because. Before we had two on, now we have a reserve one, so now, if they're both at the meetings, do both of them get paid, or is it just the one? Like, I wanted a little bit more clarification.
And which makes sense with what you're saying, I, I have no problem with that at all.
Appointed one, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just a little clarification, cause some people were marking some, and some were marking others, and I just wanted to make sure that I was. Yeah.
Okay.
On the same page.
Hmm, all right, thank you. All right. Next item is our closed session.
Um, one second.
Oh, yeah, anything else?
Is that?
Oh, P T O, sorry.
Yeah, the P T O, so. I wanna. I know there was some, some text messages and email on the P T O, the, um, payout. Past employee P T O. And. I'm, I'm just a little sideways on this, and, and I'm not saying. That I didn't agree or that we should pay out. But I feel that we're taken out of, out of the process. If you remember, Rylan, you had sent me a text. And, and I just put a timeline together to make sure that, that I've got this straight in my head in terms of my expectation. But I know I, it, one forty seven, you had sent us a message about it. And two thirteen, I agreed, and said, yep. And I, and then two eighteen, I'm just looking at text messages, I asked, um, you know, how much is it? How much are we looking at, cause again, you had responded after I agreed to respond to the email that was sent. And anyway, then, your response was ten thousand. And to me, and.
I think that was my estimate at the time.
I only remember giving me a lot of hours.
Okay. Um, cause they, yeah, cause if it came across as ten thousand, to me, that raised a flag. Is, you know, it was a rounded amount, and then I had text you back responding, um, you know. Saying that I, actually, I wanna dig into this. Um, before we make the payment, and saying, you know, we can cut a separate check, I, and I did respond to Renee's email. And, uh, or I responded to Renee by email, and then that was at two forty, and then I, I actually called. Renee at two fifty six, saying. Let's hold off until we have time to look at some documentation. Cause I wanted to understand, number one, how much was accrued, how much was used and when? Um, I, I got a paper, but that didn't, that didn't tell me, it just said what was accrued, and not really what was, what was used. And the way we left it is, we, you know, hey, cause Renee was leaving on vacation. Said, you know, we can cut a separate check, but we'll do it after you get back. And, and I had mentioned about it, going to council, I mean, cause this is a lot of money, and, uh. There was a statement in the email. From Renee saying that. The attorney, and the other thing is, I found out later that it was paid out, I didn't find out until Monday of this week. And this was October twenty fourth. Um. And I just, I find it a little ironic that I didn't find out any of this without me calling and prompting. So it, it made, to me, it made it look suspicious, and I still don't have documentation, I asked for documentation. Um, you know, to the email that, hey, uh, the attorney suggested that we pay it out. And I haven't seen that.
We sent it to you. Uh, she, she sent it.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't remember now.
There was a caution on sending it out on, on what that meant by approving that too, so there were a couple of emails that, that, that came from.
Yeah, I mean, there was one where she says, it depends what's in your personnel policy, which is unclear, your personnel policy is unclear on the matter. Right, so then she just said. Probably wanna have the mayor or, cause the administrator would approve it otherwise, but there is no administrator, so. The mayor or the personnel committee, I mean, she said maybe though, cause that's not clear in your personnel, she said, uh.
Right, and, and she made that, that comment, she pasted the personnel policy in, in the email, Renee had sent it. You know, stating, um, you know, personnel policy states, said states the following, and it said, you know, if, and she bolded it. She said, if in good standing, um, and after giving proper notice, which doesn't apply, but.
Yeah, then she says, that is perhaps for mayor, I, of course, for the personnel committee to decide.
Right, and, and my, you know, I, so I, I still had question on that. Besides looking at documentation and understanding, hey, are we, are we, you know. Confirming, as personnel committee, are we sending, are we paying out the right amount? Um, and if, if we do that, are we saying that this person left in good standing? You know, are we setting ourselves up for ri- you know, is there risk? Then does that say, okay, that person was in good standing, so there was some questions, but. Personnel committee, we had. We had no, no vote in it, no say in it, and it just happened, and. You know, I, I'd like to know who made the call to cut that check and send it. Without including us, you know, cause I, I had some pertinent questions that I had no answers for. And, and Rylan, you know, I, I was, I was saying, yeah, let's pay until I heard the amount that I wanted to look.
So I can respond to your comments or some of them, I guess, so, yeah, we did receive that. Um, email from the attorney, and we, it was an either or, myself or the personnel committee. And, uh, Renee and I talked about it, and we had, we, we thought some of the rationale for going ahead with it is one. Um, we had a precedent set from previous employees that. Uh, when our previous, uh, deputy clerk left, um, she was fired, and we gave her all of her. Uh, un, un, uncollected her on. Days that she had left.
Not all of it though, I remember that one.
She had taken two hundred days, and she had sixty left, so we paid her for the sixty, is what we did with Rebecca. So the other term is a good, the understanding of good standing, good standing, in my opinion, is, is, uh, it's very subjective. But in the case of the termination, um, uh, I took good standing as being the vote of three to two. Uh, that the other council member and myself, um, disagreed with the firing, so in our minds, she wasn't good standing. It was unanimous, that might have been indifferent, but I, uh, I looked at it as being that was my interpretation of good standing, is that I did not. Or the other council person did not, uh, think she was worthy of being fired. So it's for those two reasons, and when you, when you mention. Determining how much you're gonna pay out, I think there's a lot of risk in making that association or assumption of what you think is a fair amount. Of what you would have paid out. If you're making it sound like you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay all of it that was due. Those hours, and collecting those P T hours is working, and I think, uh. The city might have been in a bad position if I'd be not, if we had paid her something less than what she was owed. So.
But I, I, to me, I find the issue with the number.
Well, we don't, we don't know what the time was, so we never got, um, any hours or.
Tell you what the time was, I don't know what it was, but the check was for so many hours, so.
But, but, I mean, this is where our question was, is, is, when, when was this really accrued, what, what's, you know, give us a calendar of how it works. Cause otherwise, we don't have.
Payroll, the only way you can get per week what's there is go through all of the payrolls and pull everything out. Our reports do not break it down, it will give you totals and that's it. Unless it's during that payroll, cause you run those payroll reports during that payroll. And then you can run a total afterwards, when you're not in your payroll. So, to go back and go through what she did, we'd have to pull every single report out of every single payroll.
That's twenty six reports, so I mean, there's twenty six pay periods in a year. To me, I.
We were asking for the information that we just never got, and, and we started from the very, you know, first part was. Give us the information so that we can, we can see it.
Was it thirty hours, sixty hours, hundred hours, thirty eight hours?
We still haven't gotten that information.
A total, I mean, she had bigger to work with.
Work at Tyler Tech to make sure I had the right total, so I wasn't just.
That's the decision that we made, so. We think that you should have, and rightfully so, you could have been made aware of it, and some, and you could have just like, well, we're not gonna. Do that amount, we're gonna do something less, and I think that's, that's a very risky situation to take.
Well, we didn't say that. Well, we didn't say that while we were looking for.
You're asking about the amount that we were going to pay her, so.
No, we just wanted.
Wanted verification of of what it was or just another number of hours and weren't given anything.
Said we wouldn't, but. Ten thousand dollars sounded suspicious because it was an even number. And just wanted to verify.
I didn't really know.
Yeah, and I didn't know that, but the the other thing that you had mentioned, though, that I that I'm having issue with is. And you stated it, that majority. There was a majority of, you know, the council. That voted. But you said, because you thought that and another council member. Had, you know, your your like decision that you went ahead, that's not the way things work. You know, and again, not saying we weren't going to pay it all. You know, but. Just that comment, that's not the way things work. You know. So I I still, I still want to see the documentation, I mean, because I I I think we were snubbed. And I don't think that's right, we just wanted to look and we are the personnel committee and to me. I see that as egregious. You know. It was it was a simple ask.
We could. I mean, that information is there if you would. All we can give you is the total. With that. Having her spend multiple time going back and looking at individual, but that's not still not going to change the final total. Because if she if she if if our city administrator would have used, the total would be something less, but. The system keeps track of what you use PTO for up until the point or when you take it, so. The total is a combination of. What was, I'm assuming the total is is makeup of what she was entitled to, what she's used, and this is the balance.
Right, yeah. But we didn't get the chance to really, really.
Didn't get the chance to look at anything before it was.
That's right. That that's that's the rub, we. We didn't get the chance, that decision was made by the two of you. Without us or without the rest of the council, and I don't think that's right, because that's not the way things work.
That might have been a poor decision, but that was the alternative we got from our attorney.
Well, she said perhaps.
Personnel committee.
Perhaps, and I think the point here, my point of that is, the personnel policies aren't very good. They're just not very clear, they don't set forth what you're supposed to do. So. There you go, and and it's already been paid, you know. So the best way to solve it is to redraft the personnel policies and get good policies based on the lead model or our firm's model. And then you don't have one, you'll have direction, you know. About what to do, so there was no exact right way to do it, I don't, I think that was Christine's point is. You know, there is no statement in the policies, so you're asking us to guess and. And, you know. Obviously, like the close session we're about to do. You can always bring it to council, you know. That's that's fine, I mean, that's what townships do, township governments have, the council decide every last little thing. And so that's that's one way you can do it, and when they asked me about that close session, I said, well. In that instance, I think we should bring it to council for their decision, so that's what we did. Oh, God, I'm sorry.
I'm just. Just glad I got you right.
Exactly. Your point's well taken, and I think that's an excellent case of. The detail that goes into the personnel policy when it's updated. We eliminate the or.
And it also doesn't define good standing, and that's the first part of your ballot, so what is that, so that's. There's other issues.
It wasn't.
Yeah.
It wasn't intended to show any favoritism, it was just showing this is the PTO that she got. As an employee, she worked here, she deserved that PTO time off. And that was our, that was my rationale for why we. There was never a thought of, well, let's only do thirty percent of it.
Well, we didn't, we didn't say that.
I don't think you're saying that, no.
At all.
Yeah, we can do it better next time, but it wouldn't have changed the end result of what she was owed.
If you're getting paid PTO time, I would I would expect it to be what it is owed, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we just wanted to confirm that that's what it was.
Three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for. For a. Fire talk, we're not going to give them four hundred and twenty for it just because very good standing.
Okay, so.
But I do still want the documentation.
All right, next time is a closed session here. The agenda item is pending litigation, Corey Matsky versus the city of Warren, Oklahoma.
Well, I get read read it first and then read this.
Oh, I thought that was read till we close it.
I didn't know that, so, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'm I'm dying here, just read it.
Yeah, we have a motion here to close in a second, because this is what I'm reading to the. The agenda is pending litigation, Corey Matsky versus City of Warren, Oklahoma, at the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. This portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three B. The grounds for closing. Yet are as follows, the city needs for absolute confidentiality outweighs the purpose is served by the open meeting law. And then based based on the following. Absolute confidentiality is necessary so the city council and legal council can have a candid and open discussion to determine the available. Legal options to handle the litigation. Including responsive strategy and possible areas of reconciliation. The purpose of the closed meeting is not to make a decision behind closed doors. But instead, the purpose of the meeting is to determine the legal options for handling the litigation. The only business to be discussed is the pending litigation. An open session will be detrimental because it may take place in the presence of individuals involved in the litigation. A closed session would benefit the public because the ultimate outcome of the litigation may impact the finances of the city. I would now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
Motion to close.
Second.
The time is nine oh four.
It was Jim. Jim motion by second.
Jim second.
All in favor, say if I'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Time is nine oh four, the city council will now go into closed session.
You shut the door in the way.
Let you know when we're back.
Put everybody in the waiting.
Where does that go?
Stop the recording. City council will now go into closed session.
She got. She's working.
Can't you put them in the Zoom room? Or the waiting room?
That's what I was trying to do.
Was that lock meeting button, what's that?
I think we're have to.
Put away your room there, so you just do them all individually.
Hey, last time it let me do them all.
Is that just muting them or that they can't hear?
I'm going to stop the recording and then they won't be able to too, so, but if they're in the waiting room, then they can't, it just takes me a minute, sorry.
Is what it is.
Before I was able to do this in one false loop. Okay, so they're all in there, right?
The button's hidden. That was Rebecca Charles.
Okay, so.
Because she used to work. Hey, we're back at our open meeting and the next item is. An update on one fifteen Third Street Southwest. Right now, it's the gentleman Steve, Mary's friend, they've applied for a demolition permit. And they also had to apply for a building permit because part of the demolition took the part of the house away. They came back and submitted a building permit to allow to close it back up.
Did they do the work yet, that was my one question, did they actually do the work yet?
I don't know if they done the.
Not that I know, he didn't get his building permit until I think late last week, and I don't think he had time to get the contractor over there.
So just monitor that.
Process, yeah.
Monitor it, because a lot of times they say they do that, even to the point of pulling permits and then they don't. So just monitor, yeah.
It'd be awkward to see if it's.
Go ahead, just drive by, yeah.
Plus cleaning up around the building too, so. Next item is our. Twenty twenty three outstanding sitting of citizen award nomination in your packet, everybody should have a sheet. Get a chance to read through that, we have two candidates. Candidate A and B and the. You know, the citizen award committee is strongly recommending. Considering a recommendation candidate A. For the award. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve that recommendation.
I make a motion to approve that recommendation of candidate A.
For a second, second, Jim. Any comments, all in favor, so you probably say aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you, that'll be presented at the December meeting. Need a motion to approve a Casey's tobacco liquor license twenty twenty four.
I make a motion to approve Casey's liquor license for twenty twenty four. Or tobacco license.
Tobacco license, didn't say anything about liquor.
Tobacco.
He said tobacco liquor.
Oh, right. Tobacco, let's get the link. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is our government. Review of the.
I guess I haven't seen any contracts, so I'm saying. Sorry, I haven't seen any kind of calls or.
I know they weren't the baguettes.
No, they weren't.
They didn't either.
So we had three proposals from LRS. Harder waste, LRS waste management. Of. Others. Proposal that's. Came back with a different. Dollar figures for the different. Thirty two sixty four. Or ninety five gallon tote plus recycling. Complimentary, Gold Rush Weekend requirements request.
Was that required? I mean, was that required?
Right now, it's. You know, complimentary. Couple of dumpsters for trash recycling for during Gold Rush days. The third weekend in August, it's two two yard roll dumpsters that we put down here of the fire department, so is that?
Is it complimentary?
Yes, free, you know, it's they deliver, return them, empty them.
What do the residents pay for that? Was that, what do the, what does the residential pay for that? How much of that non-residential garbage to pay for, I'm asking. So I've been under the impression that the the. Residents garbage rates are up to help cover the six or seven thousand dollar cost admitted in the past.
It's never been discussed. It's complimentary. It's. Never. Been requested to respond to that.
I've been under the impression that's been the case for quite a few years, so. Um, okay.
You need me to answer that.
They're all, they're all thirty rates, but that's.
I'm okay, decent with waste management.
Okay.
Correct, right. We don't, we don't charge the residents.
Yeah, that's always been my question too.
That's a free of charge.
That's why we say complimentary. So there's two two yard dumpsters out here and four thirty yard dumpsters up at the cemetery.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that could be taken along different ways, but it's never been. We've never seen a charge for any of those, so. The fuels are charged and. There are some of them have an annual CPI, so you had a chance to look at those pages. Was three individual pages.
We didn't get any of them.
Get any of them.
Get any of them.
I can't really.
We didn't get any of those.
I got any of these?
No. That's all, that's all. The only handout we got was tonight.
That was a separate email because we did want them in the pack.
Okay, so this is my copy from the email that you.
Yes.
So you got emails?
No, I didn't see it on my email. Did you see it, Jim, I didn't, I didn't see it.
I haven't been on email list.
While you're looking, did you do the summary of the closed session?
No summary.
No summary?
No action.
Just want to make sure.
Well, I don't get my files here on my phone. Oh, I can't find.
When did you send that?
I I.
Oh, here, proposals.
Can you forward that to?
Yeah.
Actually, can you add me and then I'll pull it up and show it to.
You can forward it to me if you got my email address.
Yeah, it's sent to all of you on November nineteenth. At twelve fourteen P M.
Got you.
E D E N D fifty seven again.
Slow here. I sent it to you too, I think we both sent it to you.
The PDF, sorry, I can't open. Yeah, I can.
One question I do, I have on the LRS, I don't see taxes. Does this amount include taxes?
Yes, it does, that's that's the all in.
Okay.
All three of them are.
All three have the same environmental tax, county tax.
They're all in. One of them listed tax, okay.
Take a screenshot.
So mayor.
Yes.
I mean, if you're going to give the companies time to speak. While they read this stuff, maybe you want to do it now so we can. I don't know if you're going to do that or not.
Wasn't planning on, but I was hoping. Everybody would have seen the email. So now we're kind of behind the eight ball here. What was the council's desire?
You don't have to give time to speak, I just, if you were going to, it'd be good while they read it.
So. Let me, I guess I'd like to explain our current situation. Let me explain the current situation with our current provider, Waste Management. Of the current contract, I guess, there's some questions. About what happened with the waste management. I want the council members to listen to, so maybe I should just wait.
Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't know if you want to, that's fine, whatever you want to do, I can. So what happened was, we signed a contract with Waste Management in February twenty ten or. February tenth, twenty twenty one. February tenth, twenty twenty one. Advanced disposal had a point, so Waste Management gave us the bids, we. Accepted the contract from Waste Management. During that time, that's when they purchased. Advanced disposal. And part of that transition, advanced, advanced disposal was sell advanced disposal to some of that to GFL, which is now LRS. But going forward, that transition was very. It wasn't painful, but it was very, it took a while nationwide to upgrade Waste Management's database across the nation, not necessarily Orinoco's, but the whole nation. So there was um, that database loading took a lot of time and Waste Management. It's very. It just took a lot of time to make it happen. So in the meantime, our residents were complaining about the rates, not knowing what it is, it changes. Um, so in June of um. Twenty twenty one, I'm just gonna pin on this year in the. So that was in twenty twenty one, so um, that summer of twenty twenty one. There were some issues and it was taking longer and then August, September. Waste Management came back to the city and said, let's, we'll continue on with the um. Advanced disposal rates through twenty twenty one. In fact, that pricing went into effect up until May first of twenty twenty two. All that time, our residents were seeing the rate from. February twenty twenty one to. May one of twenty twenty two at the advanced disposal rates from the previous contract, they honored that contract. So from. May first, twenty twenty two through what's going to be December thirty first. They raised the rates to what was in fact the contract that we had back in twenty twenty one. They implemented those rates in. In May of twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three. The original contract required, not required. It stayed at four percent annual increase would be waived. Uh, at that time, so we've never since July or since May of twenty twenty two through December this year. We have not seen any increase uh, with the four percent annual, which is what the contract had, they did not. Implement that, so. So that kind of gives you a flavor of, of um. What happened during this last three years with the Waste Management contract and. The challenges they had with loading the database and how much it caused problems, but they did. Honor the previous rates for almost a year and a half. And then the balance of the year and a half, they didn't change, they didn't charge us the four percent annual increase, so. And that's how it was explained to me when I talked to Waste Management. Have you had a chance to look at the three?
That's after they, that's after they bought the contract out.
I'm sorry?
That was after, you said they didn't. They didn't give the increase after they bought the contract out?
They did not give us an increase, there was an increase when they went from the. The February twenty twenty one raid, they implemented those in May of twenty twenty two. That was per the contract that that was awarded to them, but because of all those database issues, they kept the level for a year, five, in five months, or a year and four months. So then, May of twenty twenty two, they implemented what the contract was originally supposed to implement in February of twenty twenty one. So for the next year and and um. Seven, six months, it stayed at the same rate, there was no annual increase.
When did the increase come then, is it thirty percent higher now?
I, I guess I could speak, like, cause he's putting forth some poorly researched accusations. There's no thirty percent increase, you may have a one off. On there, but we have not increased the contract, they're paying the same price now that we have the first year of the contract. Where we leaked, by contract, we could have levied two, four percent increases, we didn't do that because of the issues we had in formulating. Now, if there's a one off somewhere with a resident, we'd be happy to uh, to correct that and make it right.
How, how can you be sure it's a one off and it's not?
Cause I, I looked at our bill. What you have, what you have is one statement. I don't know what the address is. I, I'm not here to tear down another company, that's not how we do business. We conduct this, so. We'll stand by our service and our communication, our cooperation with the city. So um. We can, we can talk about the pricing if you want to um. You just, well, um. As one, I'm sure you could just. Is it okay to talk about the pricing?
Yeah, so I sent it, Paul didn't get this, so I'll just tell him, so there is a request to see the actual proposals, but there's a statute that. governs that in the Data Practices Act thirteen point five nine one subdivision three B. Which makes those non-public data until the contract is awarded. And so, but you can discuss it, cause you're not, your words out loud are not government data, what's in the proposal is the government data, that's the document. Data has to be a thing you can hold, so yeah, you can go ahead and discuss it as much as you want.
So, I'll throw this at us. Advise. Kinds of figures floating around, we could look at, maybe look at a uh. A sixty four gallon and a ninety five or ninety six gallon recycle. And just go across the border, that's what you want, that's one idea.
Okay. Cause I was keeping everything apples to apples, so.
Right, that's what we're trying to do, yeah. So, yeah, in the case of, let's just take Harders first, but alphabetical. Uh, a sixty four gallon tote. Trash is thirteen dollars thirty five cents. And residential recycling is ninety five gallons, it's thirteen dollars and thirty five cents. So if I get those two, and the recycling, it's twenty six dollars and seventy cents. And every quote, we asked for uh, fuel surcharge and CPI. In the case of Harders, they had a um. The price is guaranteed for one year. And then subsequent years would be following the CPI index. You'll, and there was a separate fuel charge, every. There's a separate fuel charge too, that goes um, it's, it's a step process from about four dollars and forty four cents all the way up incremental. Percent increases.
The fuel, the fuel surcharge. Fuel surcharge starts at four dollars and fifty cents a gallon and that, right?
That's for Harders, it changes, every company had a different surcharge.
Right, it starts at different levels.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where they started. So if you look at LRS. Um, their sixty four tote was uh, fifteen dollars and sixty one cents. And recycling. Either sixty five or ninety five was eight dollars and eighty four cents.
Well, the six, the ninety five is kind of what everybody normally has at their bases, but.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty common, yeah. You know, sixty five. Or sixty four gallon, I'm sorry. And the eight eighty five was twenty four forty five.
Big difference also is weekly recycling, Harders has weekly recycling, which was called for in the big spec. The other, the other bit was every other week pickup recycling. So they specifically asked for weekly pickup. So that's a huge difference. Every single week we pick up recycling.
LRS did have a, if you pay electronic, I think it was a two percent less.
Two dollars less.
Two dollars less, zero, okay. Uh, and then Waste Management. Their sixty four. Or a ninety year, no, sixty four was sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Per gallon trash and recycling is six dollars. So that was um, twenty four, sixty four.
Twenty two fifty and twenty four.
So that's twenty, twenty two fifty.
Twenty four.
Twenty four.
Eighteen.
No, sorry.
Yeah. Eighteen for the ninety six.
Twenty two fifty total, and the other one's twenty four total.
So we're looking at twenty two fifty, twenty four, forty five and twenty six seventy. So there's a couple of differences. LRS has a four percent annual increase. And there was a fuel charge additionally increased diesel fuel if. Above three seventy five a gallon per G O E.
It's, it's been four and a quarter a gallon pretty regularly recently, so there's a percentage in there. And so that's already in there.
Waste Management had a five percent annual increase. And their additional diesel fuel is above is uh, thirty five thousand, five dollars a gallon. They go a little bit higher before they start adding a fuel charge, right now it's four forty four, I think the end of October.
Yeah, I would venture to say, you know, in the size of Waste Management, they, they contract for their fuels, so they're not gonna be. Paying five dollars a gallon for fuel at any time, just like the airlines aren't gonna be paying a dollar for fuel.
Different rationales, yeah.
Exactly.
To clarify, the Harders bid for the trash, that same prices for a ninety five gallon bid. The spec said thirty two sixty four and we, we typed in the option of a ninety five, so the vid spec asked for just thirty two sixty four. We gave at no additional cost a ninety five gallon, so even larger capacity of trash money. Plenty of capacity. Trash and recycling, we do recyclers, I know.
So with LRS and Waste Management, you have. You know what each of the three years are versus the Harders, which is dependent upon this cost price index. And there's a different fuel charge to a percent, very small percent, but there is a charge there. But one other thing that was on the. The contracts was the uh, the, it really doesn't affect us directly, but it does indicate. Type of company, there's a one million, Harders had a one million commercial liability. LRS was two million commercial and Waste Management was five billion.
That's basically, that's basically their insurance, their liability insurance for, rather than somebody. Trucking companies are required to carry nothing less than a million, I believe.
Well, they all have it to the tour liability, I'm sure.
Exactly.
So, you know, just looking at the pricing, Waste Management probably has the best offer. They've had a. Outside of the first year, that's, it was kind of. Trouble, but they uh. Were kind enough to share that uh, recovery and not increase our rates from the basic rate from the twenty, twenty nine going through twenty twenty two, so. Think that, in my opinion, that speaks well for the company as well.
Do you look at your home rate, do you pay at home to see if the words in the contract?
What's that?
Your home rates, your personal bill, cause if you all have a bill at home.
Be honest with you, I never see ours, cause we do automatic payments, so. I mean, we just rely on what they tell us is right and have no reason to.
Mine, mine's generally around the ninety dollar range. It's cause of the uh.
For three months.
For three months, the governor's gonna get his fingers in it. You talk about these fees, these extra fees being small, if you think they're small, look at your cell phone. That stuff adds up to dargan, wicked and funny, so, but anyway.
All proposals came in on time, ten thirty, ten, yeah, every day was on the thirtieth, so.
Again, to point out.
You can, I'm sorry?
Again, to point out, it did call for weekly recycling pickup in the biz.
Is that on Harders?
Yeah.
He's gonna pick, he'll pick them up at the same truck.
That means, that means we're late getting out of the driveway, I'm missing both of them.
That's happened.
Yeah, that has happened, yes, it has.
If you have any questions, sort of. Clarifications.
Harders, the owners satisfied the weekly recycling pickup collection and the vid spec?
Yeah, it's kind of.
We always had proper, we've did, no issues with ninety five recycling every other week, but that's, I don't, however the people.
No, sometimes, sometimes it's hard to remember where you meet. I don't think it's every other week, I think it's.
So what was your cost if, if, if it was? If the recycling wasn't every week?
We put a cost because she puts a good spec, it needs to be.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's any other questions or comments?
I just wanna make sure we're doing apples to apples, cause two of them are recycling every other week.
Like we have now.
Yeah, harder is not, that's weekly.
Also have a larger trash bin. Ninety five gallon.
These are ninety sixes.
For a trash, for trash.
Yeah, our, our recycle's ninety six.
Recycling's ninety six.
They currently have a ninety six gallons.
Both of mine are ninety six for trash in.
LRS has ninety.
Pick up ninety six gallon for six dollars.
Which is the same as ninety six.
Exactly.
The big difference is the weekly recycling says.
Yeah, so if, if it was every other week, do you know what that recycle cost is?
Well, it's hard for me to put that out off the top of my head. We have to factor it because that's what was in the bridge backing call for it.
I think our residents would like to see, knowing what the cost is every year, and we have that with LRS and Waste Management, Harders is. You don't know what your second and third year is gonna be. Right now, it's more expensive than the other two, so.
Waste Management, the uh. The uh. Fuel surcharges kick in for another dollar, for another fifty cents. You know, it just kicks in at four fifty for Harders, the other one kicks in at five dollars.
Yeah, it's nothing to.
Diesel, diesel, diesel's going five dollars.
Yeah, I mean, but, but LRS is even lower, that three seventy five. What was that, Jim? I said LRS is three seventy five for the fuel surcharge, when it kicks in.
It's already kicked in.
So it's already in.
Less a percentage. It already be in place, cause you're, right now, you're. Four, quarter, you're in a four and a quarter, sixty fifth street, I quick drove today. For some reason, I saw it showing up there.
I'll make a motion that we. Offer the, have the city negotiate a contract with Waste Management for the next three years. Is there a second?
Yeah, so I'll second that.
Other comments or questions?
What's the, what's the increase to combined length? Five percent of the management.
What's the one, I'm sorry?
Their annual increases by percent.
So as an example of um. If you took the biggest ninety six trash and ninety six recycling. And. Currently it's twenty four dollars and three years would be twenty six forty five.
In the third year.
In the third year, yeah.
Wouldn't be such, it's not gonna be such a bad deal, you get the, get the state out of the deal. Wouldn't be such, that's all can be such a bad deal, you get the, get the state out of the deal.
They have a.
Yeah, exactly.
It could be less than five percent. If the C P I comes in under five percent, the increase could be less if it's fixed at five. In another contract and the C P I comes in under.
If you think inflation's going down right now, you're. Inflation's only starting.
I got a brush, I'll say.
Yeah, consumer price index.
Sign down halls and papers, sing if you're gonna be saying aye. Pose. Very good, thank you. Appreciate everybody sticking with us. Thank you.
May I be in contact with you about a new contract?
I'm sorry.
Be in contact with you about a new contract?
Uh, who would it be? City Hall?
Okay, yeah. Email and if you'd like us to draw one out for approval.
Yes, please.
All right. Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Would you really think anybody would ask me to go out here all night just to listen to us talk about garbage?
Right, Terry Lewis.
I didn't. Three items left, we get out of here.
You'll have a better Thanksgiving, like.
I'm coming down and going back.
Next item is a F Y I. Next item is an F Y I regarding our building official contract building services. C M S. Uh, earlier this year. It's all these building services, Casey and Roger Paul. Um, was our original owner or the father and Roger and. Was the son and then Casey was the grandson. February, March, they decided to sell the company and. Roger's going back into ministry and Casey was gonna go back and get into law enforcement. So they sold the business to C M S, which is a division of W S B and S C, I think.
Some, yeah, C M S, but they were, they're owned by W S.
Okay, so. Right now, that contract was finishing up this year. And we, Renee and Sunny have been working with them and building permits and getting those things coming, going through the services that Roger and Casey were doing. So we're coming up on uh contract time that we need to look at how we're gonna go forward in twenty twenty-four. This year with C M S, it's had its challenges. Um, just a new customer, but at the same time, they uh. They're very much, uh, and they're a very large um building services. They service like forty cities in southeast Minnesota. If you go to the C M S Insuring Services, you'll see their website and there's. And with Casey and uh. Roger selling out, they picked up three more, so there's forty-three services right now. They take care of building permits, it's a paper. And then they're talking about going to uh a software update. Back next year, hopefully. Any other comments to, what we're doing right now with our C M S, it's a. We meet with them every two weeks.
Yep, every two weeks, we have a meeting, go through what we have, going what's still pending, what's. Where we're at on different ones, just to kinda keep both of us on the same page right now. I think I'm down to waiting on maybe. New building permits.
What's where they keep slow, uh, what stages everything's in?
They might over there. I don't have access because they do everything on paper. Um, they are looking at using, switching to the iWork system, which is what we currently have. Um, and in there, you can look on there and you can see where everything is at, but right now they don't have a system for that.
So the reason we have rated it council is to let you know that Olmsted County is, they provide building services.
I'm just gonna ask that.
Yeah, that was my next question, dude.
For they, so they do the county, but they also think of Byron and Stewart. They picked up those building permits, that type of thing. Everything's electronic, that's, there's a software out there. It's called nice um, the C V A.
I don't remember how you pronounce it.
Yeah, but it's all, all electronic, it's on your phone, the website. The nice thing about contractors, you can get permit updates on the phone. There can be paper, if somebody walked in to the office here and they could skip it online. I was made aware of it back in twenty. Anybody in Olmsted County can set an account up if you wanted to, basically this contract. So everything is uh electronic, you go on the website, you submit it on website. Really no interaction here. City, except for the people that wanna walk in or don't have access to.
The only thing the county doesn't do is zoning, so we would have to have a zoning administrator, um staff to sign up.
So the zoning, right now C M S is doing that for us. We, we don't have a zoning administrator, so we still have questions that we need to ask. In some cases, we go to. Planning services with permits and variouses. Variances, so. So we're looking at those two options and. Come up with the plan for. Olmsted County and. I don't know if that's something that. Stan Tech Planning Services could do, they're really more into the planning as opposed to our old code.
There was another one that I did a demo with people, save built, built. Save built. And they're looking at getting a building official in this area.
What is it called? Safe?
Safe, S A F E B U I L T, I think. They're supposed to be giving me a proposal too on kinda what they can do in pricing and stuff, but I haven't seen that come through yet. So there's a few options out there, but. I think we kinda have to look at all of them. Write up kind of a pros and cons or something of all of them and then kinda bring them back to you guys, so you can kinda.
Has C M S ever been, been an issue in working with the city?
This is back in May, had a roof, roofing permit. Took three months. It's one of those areas that they're improving their process of more of a flat fee.
I'm getting those back in like a day or two, sometimes day off. When I, if I turn them in early in the morning, so I've gotten a lot faster turnaround on some of those, but. It's the value-based ones where they have to look at all the drawing and. Specs and everything that those are.
What about coming up with the sewer project? Are they gonna be able to maintain with what we have coming up next year?
Uh, C M S, you mean? Well, I think that's.
That has been part of our conversations, like they've asked, like, uh, how many numbers, because. I've been watching how many we've been doing and stuff and kind of. In my mind, how much could we get in if everybody starts hooking up? So they have, we have been kinda talking numbers and how many inspections and whatnot that they would have to be doing, so they are made aware. Whether or not they can keep up that, I'm. Sorry, it'll probably depend too on when everything comes in, if they get like a ton of them or if they're just triggered.
But we also had an issue, wasn't there with the C M S on, on that one uh. Pressureized system, um, over off of first grade, we know that was a big thing that, that, that cost a lot and.
Private grigger system. That was a lot of understanding of the Minnesota statutes and everything, so. The uh. The one thing that C M S, that's okay, that's one thing that Olmsted County would not do, would be the water inspections.
They wouldn't.
But we, when we talked with them, we had Kane there with them and we were discussing that and. You know, if Kane, the scenario we talked around and finally, and that sound like a good deal is that Kane would be. Kind of the inspector, but he would be taking a lot of pictures documenting the connections, both. At the curb stop, going into the house, the water meter and installation, everything, so there is. Um, a lot of cities do their own water inspections too, but C M S. They do them too, but there's, as you will hear more if you haven't already. There's quite a process of making sure the C M S inspector is there when they do the excavation, when they do the water meter. And there's, it's all nice, ideally you do it all at one time, but the C M S inspector has to come out and look at it. You know, two or three times, so there's, whereas a public works person here could do that really quick and document it and. And uh, even the instructions were asking people to contact Kane if they have any questions. But they call C M S for the inspection, so. Cause Olmsted County doesn't do water inspections, just building permits.
Lot of curiosity with, cause, cause you're talking, right now you're talking water, but I think the biggest hookup this next year is gonna be sewer. How many? Connections do? Outside of what's already in through the uh develop.
Right, developers are just. So it's, that's, that's a, you know, right now our organs is written around twelve months to hook up into water and sewer and. Find out.
I mean, it's just if you have to have three inspections with C M S on doing some of this stuff, I mean, that's a lot of time for those guys coming back and forth and costs.
It's a lot of coordination, a lot of communication, so.
Well, I pict- I pictured everybody's gonna be, have communication down back in the end of next year.
I would hope, I would hope I did, yes.
Yeah, and your incentive agenda is, I believe that's where it is, um. Kind of a, yeah, new water hookup instructions. It does state in those, if you can try to do everything all at once and have them out there to inspect everything at the same time, it. Will lessen their chance of interruptions of their water. So we are trying to get that out there too.
But the thing I really like about Olmsted is that it's all communicated electronically to the contractors. Uh, when the permits are, there's no telephone calls or anything, they just get that email saying that's good to go, so.
What's the cost?
It's onsite, it's on web too.
Is it cheaper for Olmsted County or?
Their fees, yeah, their fees would pay them. Right now, we have kind of three main fees. We've got the building permit, you've got the state surcharge, the plan review, and then the zoning. We get a little bit of the fee, I believe, and maybe the planning. State surcharge always goes back to the state, um, that's something we have to collect, then we get a little tiny portion of the other ones, and then we get all of the zoning fees. That's our administration fees for doing what we need to hear with building permits. Olmsted County, they would keep the fees.
Oh, it may be cheaper too, we really didn't get a good feel.
Yeah, I think they, we can add in a zoning fee, especially if we have to do the zoning. Sign off on all the zoning and everything. I believe we can set our charge, they would charge it and then just send it back to us. On a monthly basis or whatever we decide to do.
And our permit fees that go to, that all goes to the city, right? The building permit itself?
No, most of that's the fees to cover.
When it comes to water.
Yeah, I mean, you get, and then we get the, any wagon sack, the water meter itself, you know, all that stuff, that's kinda comes back to us. But the billing permit and the plan review, most of that goes to C M S for their work, that's how they get paid.
If we have a coast, coast of water inspection, if Kane can do those, that'll kinda cover some biz salary to, or wages.
Yeah, that's, that's why this fourth person's.
I'm just taking pictures and watching stuff.
Yeah, so it's a, I guess with your. Approval, we'd like to pursue all the options, so we can do something in January, February, it's gonna be. We're, we're bumping up against getting something done by one January, but maybe one Feb- one February or something like that, so. I just think there's a. I just, I, I've heard, I've heard from one contractor that, from Bigelow Homes, they like them. And they deal with a lot of, um, they did about twenty percent of homes in Rochester, everything else is out in the southeast Minnesota. So everything is all handheld or phone, website, that type of thing, so they really like that, and they really. A big proponent of the Olmsted County electronic system.
It keeps them on the job instead of running back and forth to figure out. Makes sense too.
And uh. If we, I think we just need to make a concerted effort to go back to Olmsted County and ask them if. If they'll share with us his current fee, so we can do some comparison with what we.
They pulled them up on a little sheet. Theirs is all value-based, they don't have any over-the-counter, flat fee ones like we do currently. Everything is based by, based off of that. So I think their lowest permit fee is eighty-four dollars. And ours is fifty currently. But I know Tom and Sunny were talking a different fee schedule, because those were pretty low.
And, and, and that's a good point, because even, we don't know what C M S fees are gonna be next year either.
No, I know Sunny and Tom were in talks and I loved it that time, because it wasn't really.
They basically picked up the fees for this year what Casey had, I think.
Yeah, they took over the contract, so.
With their new fees, there's. They'll probably go up, how much we don't know. But that would be part of our discussions with C M S to. Find out what they can offer us in twenty twenty-four for one year. Know there are consensus to look at.
Oh, I, I agree, yeah, there definitely consensus.
A bunch of workshop dates. We're looking at, I think I sent an email out about the fifth, sixth, and eighth of December. Don't think I got any. Any responses back? Whichever. If you wanna look at your calendars, give that some serious thought about Tuesday, Wednesday, I prefer Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
That doesn't sound right. Well, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm sorry, I bet it's Thursday, but that's Friday.
Tuesday, Wednesday. Believe I can, but not Friday.
No Friday.
No, it's gonna be Friday.
Okay, let's drop in.
I'm gonna try to do Wednesday.
Let's try for the Wednesday then.
What time?
We'll invite fire department.
Probably five or six thirty, or you wanna go wherever.
Six thirty, everybody remember.
Hope we can get the interim person in.
Yes.
And then, before then.
Make a motion, we approve, consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Renee, for pulling a lot of this stuff out of the major agenda. Okay, could you work on that one, done more?
Camera, stop talking.
All right. All favor, signify before you're saying aye. Prove. Motion adjourned. Favor say aye. Thank you very much.